Read the agenda before I go.
Oh, it's fine.
Are you doing secretary again?
Nope. How about that, being recorded?
Did you feel like that?
My commanding general is watching this.
Everybody else went.
Oh, okay.
Well, she's listening to all that stuff and she says we're in the susceptible.
A group, yeah.
And then some guy asked Wolf as intensified mask requirements. I don't know how or where or what, but I was on the radio these intensified mask requirements.
Pretty much once you go over your house.
Well, anyway, uh, one of us just says, how long is that gonna last? And he said, well, until it stops with the virus, any good.
Until, yeah, it's the third. On the fourth.
I don't think it's not the end of the year, but it's just, it's political.
You'll be able to keep your mask up in the works, probably.
Well, the guy last night said, even though it's, it's, it does a marginal amount of good, we can use a little good margin once in a while. Place that and keep the rest of the quality on.
There you go.
There you go.
What I eat tomorrow.
You're gonna be eating more meats too, otherwise.
Well, at seven thirty, one death.
Praise for the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we're still practicing super distancing, uh, means managing the number of people that are going to be with us here tonight in the audience, whether you're watching via video or if you want to deal with Jeff tonight, uh, when you have the teleconference on. Uh, we'll give you the information for that, uh, this year. Actually, it's right down in front of us here too.
On the agenda.
Then it's on the agenda, but we have the dialing number, it's one seven one seven three nine eight three seven nine four. And the host number is gonna be four two one.
No, we don't need that, they just need the ID, the second number.
Meaning that.
The six six two number, sorry.
What's that? All right, participating numbers, ID number six six two nine seventy one six. If you need us to later on to announce that, please let us know, uh, and we will re-announce it also again. Okay. First thing on our agenda tonight is our roll call.
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Cahill.
Here.
Okay. Second thing on the agenda is public comments, do we have anyone to do the public comments?
God, public comment.
All right.
I'm Brad Sanders, for those who don't know, um, you all got a copy of that petition that was circulating through the community, um, on several local residents about to know that turn signs that were put up at the human marker in track sixteen. Um, there's, uh, a lot of folks are going down towards the road, um, and making that turn now, and in the past thirty days, I myself have been down there, and that, that intersection's getting congested, and it is making convenience to go down there. Uh, but two, two things that, for the safety of those signs, a lot of folks are turning around at Shanksville, um, and they're trying to make a U-turn to come back to make the right turn of Steelman Marker, and the second sign that was placed is really blocks the view when everybody's bottom of the hill pulling out from the westbound traffic coming up through. Uh, so, uh, we all got together here and just to voice our opinions on their signs and to see if their signs can be removed and let it up to the operator as to, you know, which intersection to use, uh, whether Orchard or Steelman Marker.
Okay. Dorian, how was it, did you hear it again?
Uh, he pretty much covered everything, I mean, they've, I think that the people have the right to make that decision whether they wanna go to the, the more unsafe intersection at Orchard or make that left-hand turn at Steelman Marker. Um, but those signs are, my oldest one pulled out there, and he almost pulled out in front of a motorcycle because that sign went up there to the right, I was in the passenger seat with him, and that's, that definitely is gonna have to be moved if those signs stay somehow, some way. Um, I know that the state marked the road, but that doesn't mean that that's where it has to stay, I mean, it can't be.
It needs to be re-added.
It needs to be, the whole thing needs.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, but as for a no enough hand turn, either that or the people that, we need to make sure the tire man and us can make it.
Well, he, he, there's, there's.
There, there need to be.
Yeah, there's accessibility.
And the people that, that live right here on Steelman, we're already talking about eleven, eleven houses, and there's sixty-two people at Signature that said, we always make a left-hand turn at Steelman because we don't, we don't like going to Orchard, and that's the people down here on, on Topper and Crone and Petron, and, um, I just think that if you're gonna, if you're gonna enforce the sign, then have it be to people that are following GPS opposed to the local people that, you know, it's two and a half miles around there for Brad to get to our houses, and, uh, and I don't feel safe in Orchard. I've had so many push calls at Orchard making that turn, coming and going, because the people coming out of Maryland are going at such a rate of speed, you cannot see them coming until they're right there, and if you're pulling a trailer or something, you just can't get out of that, so.
Uh, again, as I said earlier to both of you guys when I talked to you before, we only, we only follow what state, what state is recommending or plays, and actually, we don't take any motion that a township needed, nor did we vote to put that sign out, that was done by state, stated on, so this petition, we must hope they're taking petitions, we need to forward works of state highway, uh, study people and let them see your petition, we can't take that sign down, we can't, we were, we were told to enforce what the state implemented, that's what we have to do, uh, so to get it taken down, I'm fine with this, I think Bobby, I think we're all fine, if you wanna take it down, we'll take it down if the state says that they would repeal their decision, if they repeal their decision and then an accident takes place at that particular intersection, it leaves us to give you liability, is that correct, Mr. Wiskel?
Well. I don't know the answer to that, I mean, when you say relieve from liability, people are suing after these days, and we may be sued, but that's a state road, and it's not a township road, and the state has jurisdiction over that road, so Mr. Barlow is correct when he says that it's, the state's call, if we, if we went down there and we removed that sign, the state could find us for damaging state property.
So the state called Liberty Township and said, you need to put up a left-hand turn.
I don't know, I don't know all that.
That's not what happened, that's not how it all went down, two years ago, I think it was at least two years ago, there's about three now, uh, when we had that fatality down at the intersection of Boyle and Sixteen, there was Orchard.
Orchard.
Orchard, there was a, a petition went out, there were a thousand signatures to address Orchard Road intersection, Steelman Marker intersection was also on that petition, to, is, they were both identified as dangerous intersections within our township, the state came out and almost immediately once they received that, well, some of you guys knew you saw the petition, uh, and then addressed it in a timely manner, not, you know, and they put a, you know, a, a turn main in, in Boyle and, uh, what, Sixteen, we wanted them, we petitioned them to put a turn main in also at Steelman Marker, they said they could not do that because they did not have the areas to do a turn main, but they would evaluate and do a study and get back next, well, they never got back next until, what, three months ago, four months ago, when they.
Far, at least.
We, Bobby and I, we asked what the problem is, we still have a problem at Orchard, um, Boyle, and, uh.
Orchard.
I mean, Orchard and, uh, uh, Sixteen, and we've got to contact the state to address that, and while we were talking with them out there, they called us about, what are you guys gonna do with Steelman, that's what got this back, next thing they know, they did send us, asked us about doing a study, yes, we still went to, tell us now what we think needs to be done, and that's exactly what happened, they came back and said, listen, this is what we want done, it's Steelman Marker, they sent us the markings, they sent us the drawings, and the second sign that just got put up, well, last week, then came out, they called us and said, listen, you guys required the two hook signs up, you only put one sign up, and we said, well, we were only instructed by state to put one sign up, and then I met a district attorney, and he said, no, here's what we supposed to did it, and he goes, I've already marked it and you need to put it in that area, is that what he said?
Yeah.
He said.
Well, I see, I've seen the red one.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the key, one call.
Yeah, they did everything, only thing we did is put sign up, again, if you can get the state to reverse their decision, I will take that sign down tomorrow.
Okay. So this, this is the thing, I come. Hold on, what'd you say?
I said, how do you get to ask a question when you're on the phone?
Uh.
Mic off, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, real mic, if you're on a real mic, uh, we'll get with you just in a minute here again, uh.
I can only talk about Steelman Marker myself, too.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Hold on.
Um, so does that answer your question on that part?
Yes, it does, um, but the, uh, with, with the no, it, I contacted District Eight, and District Eight, they, that's the petition that's why it was being presented to the board supervisors here, um, is they told us that it had to go through the township, District Eight told me that it had to go through the township.
And Mr. Wiskel can.
So, so that's, that's, that's why we brought it to you all about having a gun, and I, I mean, I've made the turn there, we've got a lot of residents here that have done it for sixty, fifty, thirty years, um, and it is, it's kinda odd because as you can see on there, there's, the statistics were from PA, uh, the crash data, and there were seventeen accidents in Orchard and eight at Steelman Marker in a major timeframe.
Well, we're gonna, should, should, should we go and dress that, because she's down her own stuff in the township, so should we do that?
I bet that ten years, not eight, ten, and in ten years found eleven, and that was what we took as Liberty Township, not what state police might have taken to, um.
Well, that was all, that was, that was from two thousand ten to two thousand eighteen, but the two thousand nineteen crash data is not listed for, for that, not yet, well, that's, they're almost two years ago, but District Eight was from the state. Yes, it's from Pennsylvania, uh, crash data.
Yeah, I think hers is.
And that would, that would not.
So that was, that would probably be Steelman, you got two months, ten years, five and eight.
Yeah.
But then I think she, she said that hers, from what we understand hers, her cross, her data only, uh, and I don't know if the state's team or not, but it only comes to the fact if there's either a tear from the vehicle, or a tear, or if there was an injury that's not any.
That one, that's all we got access to, yeah.
No, well, Penn, PennDOT said that it was, you know, whether it's a rear end or what happened and the conditions of the road and things like that, and if there were any injuries, some of them are now injured, most of them.
Right, no, it's like, you have non-recurringable.
Well, well, he, his data and my data are pretty much the same thing because PennDOT doesn't get non-recurringable crashes, they only get recurring, so if he's getting PennDOT's data, it's pretty much exactly what I have, yeah, mine just went, uh, mine was added on a couple of years.
Okay, um.
Good.
Who do we have on line?
Hello?
Cindy, Cindy, did you say Cindy?
Yes, Cindy Arns.
Hey, Cindy, I gotta ask you, can, can you hear everybody okay on the phone?
Yeah, I can hear everybody okay.
Okay.
First thing I wanna say is I'm the one that started that petition for Orchard Road, Steelman Marker Road was not included in that petition.
Not on the petition, correct.
For Orchard Road, and I'm the one that created petition.
Correct.
So that did not happen. Number two, I don't know why they put the sign up there, but since they have it up there, I have almost been hit twice by people turning left in there, so the sign's not doing you any good, they're still turning left in there, so if you're gonna have a sign up, it needs enforcing.
Okay.
All right, anything else, Cindy?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, it, it's, to address the enforcing part, I know once we put the sign up, uh, it was determined that we should give a grace period to let people become accustomed to their sign, I think, uh, we were determined at that time, thirty days?
Yes.
July first.
July first, it is now, I pray you correctly draw, if you're not going to start enforcing that, because the state said the same thing, they wanted to sign up, and if you're not gonna enforce the sign, there was no reason to have the sign here.
Right.
Hello?
Hello?
Sound like Judy Hogan.
No.
Is she not muted again?
You don't have a voice.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Okay.
Um.
Is there anyone else on the speaker?
Is it just Cindy Arns on the phone?
Yeah, this is Peter, well, I'm still on the line.
Yeah, okay, that's good, we were just trying to find out if anybody else was on, right there behind you in line or anything.
Somebody, somebody else was going there, but they still, they in here with fifty voices and they hung up, I don't think that people understand how this works, because I wasn't the one sure too, because I could hear everything from the school horn, and I didn't know how I would be accused to speak, so I think maybe you should, you know, some kind of, uh, I don't know, I don't know what you need to do, if people don't know that they speak law or that they do a deep thought, you're all going to have to.
Yeah, there's Judy.
I don't know if that.
Yeah.
May not know, may not, you can talk to them, you just have to speak.
Hello? Hello?
Yeah, they, they hung up, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so, what needs to be addressed to?
Yeah, obviously, one thing, is it something he said, if that's okay?
Okay.
Um, we have been enforcing it as far as sitting there and pulling some people over in the mornings, and as far as enforcement goes, it's, yeah, they gotta be all or nothing, I can't just enforce it for, for area, from the area, but let the people who live in the area get a break on, I can't do that.
Right.
So, it's either all in or all out.
Now, I'm gonna read you one thing, is from supervisor's standpoint, and that's why I said, you know, if the state turns it, I'm fine, but for our duties as supervisors, this is from section class K, section six oh seven, the duties of a supervisor, the board of supervisors can be charged with the territory, governance of the township and the executive and legislative, executive administrative powers in order to ensure sound, physical, manhood, and the secure, the health, the safety, and welfare of the citizens of the township, and that's where we come from, is we're, we have to be concerned with all citizens, not just the future, and, and not only are we, are we have to be concerned with all citizens in our township, we have to be concerned with all people that travels through our township, just like I said to you guys before, out here at the intersection of Boyle Road and Orchard Road and Sixteen, even though we were not involved in that accident that took the life of that young person, we have been named in that lawsuit, and any accidents that occurs like that, normally, if someone, if attorney wants, they can name us in it, but they come back and say, listen, you were given an opportunity by state, state recommended you do this, this, and this, to minimize your risk, and you don't do that, then we're gonna be responsible, I would think, uh, under attorneys in a court, and say, well, you know what, you were told to do this, you didn't do this, so you guys are liable because you didn't benefit that, that, that.
Well, that, that's a, that's a different hogging, though, you're, whenever you're talking about, we put up a sign that says, maybe that can't turn, and then you're talking about, well, we put up a sign here that says you can make a turn, but it's a one-way street, that's negligence, am I correct, Mr. Wiskel? As opposed to what, he's, he's saying that you're liable for any, any motor, motorists traveling through your township, that's not correct, I mean, if you, you have a negligence.
We are, we don't, if we don't give the advice, if the state comes and says, listen, we, this is what we're telling you to do, and we don't do it, we are negligent because we didn't just send guns to the state's recommendation, and they hold the higher power over the road, even if they're wrong, it's not our fault.
But, 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 let's just, let's just deal with the current situation, you want us to remove that sign.
Right.
As the supervisors made a motion tonight, went down and removed that sign without state approval, and someone makes a left-hand turn and there's a kill, we're liable, we're getting sued.
Right.
We're, we're, that's it, because it's a state road, they put the sign up, we did something without their approval, I can, I can tell you that, these other hypotheticals, I, I don't, I, you know, just all depends, but I'm just.
So, so the signs are there?
Yeah, they are.
But the state, but, but, upon the state's direction, the state said, and matter of fact, they put one sign up, and the state, well, I don't wanna say it was upset, the state was concerned and said, you didn't do it right, you gotta put another sign up, so they made, they made to put the sign up on the north side, yeah, that's on the north side of Six, Sixteen, they put it only on the south side when they first put it up, so, uh, ju- just with that concrete situation, we removed those signs, someone turns in there, there's an accident, we're, we're gonna be sued and we would most likely be liable in that situation.
And, 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 and what I go back to, Mr. Barlow, when, when I called you and asked for the authorization, but, hey, when I contacted District Eight, they told me to get with the county, the township supervisors to get a copy of that authorization.
Right.
They said, we gave authorization showing the size of the sign, the size of the position that it would be placed in, it's been marked, they said, that was upon the request of the township, so, uh, what I'm asking is, who do I contact at District Eight, because they're telling me that the township requested authorization to put the signs up, that they did not recommend.
What they requested was to follow through with, uh, doing the study.
Okay.
This is what they did, and the recommendations from the study, and that's what they did.
So, so who do we, who are we, who do we go to at District Eight, if they're telling me that the township requested authorization to put the signs up, as if, you know, the township wanted the signs, but not their recommendation, they said the township requested to put their signs up, and you gave them authorization, but.
We, we, we sent down to District Eight, did it, exactly.
Coming down here, we're splitting down here at, uh, four hundred and sixteen.
Can, what was his name?
Can we get his information to?
Uh, who's the?
He was act, and some guy was, wasn't there at the time.
Right, he was acting.
I think he was out on a medical and he was filming issues, and I don't remember his name.
Well, we have the information of the contact guy that was contacting the county for this, because you should've got.
Well, I got, I got an email, I got the email that was attached where they forwarded the information to Wendy.
Yeah, that should be on there, that's the guy, I'm, I'm serious, that's the guy that we talked, that talked with us, because he's the one that had the authority, not us.
Right, that gave you authorization, right.
The guy we met down at the corner when he was.
I don't know if he has the authority or not, he, he works out in Dennisburg.
That's, yeah.
But he works out Dennisburg, but the people came out, did the study and did the rec, and that recommendation is from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, uh.
Is, is there, is there any information that you can give us from the recommendation that we can take to PennDOT?
Well, we just, what I would do is just on my left, I didn't, I didn't have to walk.
So that was just, that was just the layout of it, that wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't Mr. Eight recommending the sign, they, I was just doing construction that you could, that's all it said, the authorization.
Well, well, they did it, they did a study, they did a study, you got the study, right?
Uh-uh, no, I mean, they all signed.
The study that they did on that road was like three years.
No, they, they, it was, they did the study then, didn't they?
I don't recall that, that they did.
I thought they did.
I don't even remember.
And if the study was three years ago, that's in the same timeframe.
Right.
Uh, because they did, they, they, they put it in the same timeframe as Orchard, and they also, because like Cindy said, the, on the petition, it was only Orchard for a turn main, but they, when the supervisors met up with them about the turn, they were talking about Steelman Marker, and they also talked about, uh.
Ranch Trail?
Ranch Trail, that they just finished, uh, Sixteen, one Sixteen, they put a turn in there.
Right.
So, they were doing, and that was the same thing, as you guys remember, they also did Jackson Mountain, here crying, so they were coming down three, doing their study all the way down three about these crash stones and these, uh, and, and that was one of them, I mean.
Hi. Well, is quite a long on the phone there?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yes, who's, who's with us?
This is, this is the yard to me.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to tell you about that other spines put up on the rocky inside going down that hill, it, it tears your vision.
Yes.
You have to really worry about it.
Yeah, we already got that note, that's, that's been rolled up.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, we, I, I don't really, we can contact state and see if one of us moved it anywhere else, but the one reasoning wrong, if you see that's gas points, I can't, so we can't do it too.
Yeah.
Right.
But we're gonna look into that, Cindy.
If there, if there is any other, if there, if we could get an author, or a recommendation from the state that we could go to, I would like to pursue this further with District Eight and, and pursue it a little bit further, so.
I'm just gonna go and do that.
If you can get, uh, if, if we can get in touch after, you know, a week or so, if you can get that information signed.
I can give you a contact, we can give you a contact, Mr., uh, uh, District Eight, uh, we have, we have assigned a person to District Eight for our township, and we can get you back up, get you, uh, you talk to them again.
Yeah, we'd like to do that, so, all right, that's all we have, that's all I have.
One other subject, we're talking about liability and negligence and so forth, those lines coming up Steelman Marker Road, they're not rough, they're two narrow on the one side, now if someone gets in a wreck, then the township is liable because now they know about it.
Well, that road is winding up, we put that road, well, we milled that road up and widened it, we widened that coming up through, it doesn't need state standards.
That yellow line meets state standards, we're going, going down the road?
Going all the way down the road, from, from the stop sign, all we had to go down?
I can't take my truck and trailer over there about the trailer jumping into people's yards, there's no way.
That's okay. We won't address that.
There's no way. If I get in a wreck, we're gonna, we're gonna be around.
Okay.
Oh, boy, this, I'm just saying.
Didn't I see a sign there, no trucks over forty-five?
Oh, that's like.
I'm talking about, pick up the truck and the trailer.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
And it's making local delivery.
Right.
There you go.
Yeah.
No, it's just because they brought a big truck up and they put it center, it is not centered.
Oh, we, yeah.
Yeah, so.
What's, what's the width?
Why can't they put a single line in it instead of double?
Well, we wouldn't, but we put double lines, first and foremost, double lines is what we require for sharing to be able to, uh, be forced crossing the line, uh, sadly, it's a double, a single line is not covered under state, but the fuel's not, only double lines because state does not recognize a single line.
So what is, what's the, what's the width?
Eight point two, wide.
No, what's?
Overall, overall, you put double line, they don't get, it's overall, both width is, and you put double line overall.
So you're telling me you can put that double line right down the middle of someone's driveway?
Uh, no, no, you should be on the.
Overall width, overall is the road, and there is a nine on each side.
I understand that, if you have a yellow line off one side or the other, you're telling me that you can put it wherever you want?
I was like, and they can drop the truck.
I don't.
You're gonna do over the.
How many times?
Overall width.
We're, we're talking about, uh, negligence here.
Just that they, supposedly, it goes to the center and the end, but, you know, when they, when they paint the lines, I, you know, I, they don't, every foot go out and measure, okay, here's the exact.
And they drop that, they never, certainly, they, they.
Yeah, I mean, they do the best they can when they paint the double lines.
I think, I think they go out and, off the contour of the road, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, I don't paint lines, oh.
That, that's a bad job.
Well, I've seen a lot of them across the state.
All right, all right.
Anything else, Mike?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, three J, thanks, uh, we can chat with virtue guys and then pass this on to state.
Yeah, thanks.
Sounds good.
Anybody else on the phone there now?
Okay, uh, any other comments?
No more.
No more comments, okay, we'll move on to the supervisor's comments.
No comments.
No comments at all, okay.
I'm saving them up for when we have the phone money.
Bobby, you got your comments?
I'm gonna bank my comments.
Okay, yeah, uh, now I'm gonna do a couple of things here on the private comments, first off, I, I wanna, actually, this guy, we, Matt, thank you for coming in with your concerns and, and, you know, I've said, everybody has a right to their opinion, and, uh, you know, and I thank the residents for coming out, uh, one thing, the fire companies have not resumed their meetings that I know, is anybody else heard differently to the fire company meetings?
Well, I guess I stopped in down Innesburg periodically.
All right, I'm saying, because I know the fire company, so, we had, weren't participating All right, I'm saying, because I know the fire companies, uh, we had, weren't participating in tour and spending rounds with the fire companies, uh, so we hadn't been out there. On a different note, I wanted, I've already talked to Wendy and already talked to, uh, by the way, the supervisor's coming to, I wanna welcome Jessica Ilkay, she's with us tonight. Uh, Jessica is our new tax collector. Uh, Jessica, you should get up and stand in front of the camera for people to see who the new tax collector is, in case you that they don't know who you are.
Are you serious?
She's very serious. She's like, come up and tell me again.
Oh, boy.
This is the new tax collector, talking for our township, so you can send her here to Wendy. We appreciate it, thank you much. She's also the backup secretary, uh, here for the township, so, uh, if you don't get in touch with Wendy, you may, uh, be speaking with, uh, Jessica at times, and thanks again that Jessica stepped up and, uh, took a decision. Um, one thing I wanted to talk to the supervisors about in the, uh, the comment section was, uh, we've had a couple of accidents over the past, a couple of months that I've had to go out and try to track down a notary public, uh, someone, we've never worked for the township, since we don't have anyone in the township to do that. Um, I did talk with Mays Winchoff, and she is now since retired, and has indicated that she, uh, is gonna let her license expire, uh, when it, and she's not renewing her license. Found someone else who was willing to do some delivering work for us, but they don't wanna do it on a full-time basis or even a part-time, maybe a couple times a year. So, that being said, uh, I encouraged, uh, Jessica and talked with her because of the, uh, position of the tax collector at Times in the Republic for, um, too. Uh, the township always needs stuff done like that, and, uh, so I asked her to look into, uh, what entails being a notary public, so she did. And, uh, anyhow, she's agreed that she would be interested in getting her certified as a notary public for the township. Uh, it's a, how long's the class, Jessica?
It's a three-hour class.
A three-hour class that she can take online, or they do have a class coming up in Gettysburg on, uh, Notary attempts, if they will go to school it. Um, so I wanted to talk to the supervisors about having Jessica, uh, take this class and become a certified notary public for the township, uh. So that's why I opened it up on that. The cost for the, for the class, the stamp, the four-year, uh, certification and the stamp, is three hundred and eighty-five dollars with a sixty-five dollar test fee that she will have to take, that's in addition to, uh, to the test, you have to take a test to do that, um. But it also increases the stamp, you know, the thing, you take it separately, seventy dollars for the, for the class, you have to buy your, uh, stamp, you have to pay for your, uh, I think it's a hundred dollars a year, uh, to be, uh, to be a notary, uh, so anyhow, they wrap it all in one price. Um, so, I made a motion, then you do that, um, can I make a second?
I have a question.
After a second, then we go to questions, how's that? That's, didn't I have a phone there?
That's Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to hear the question.
Okay, then I may get...
Well, you, you can have a motion in a second, then, then you have a question.
All right, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, we asked her, when she was here, was a notary.
Yeah, she was.
She had sort of a phoning policy about charging for it. So it's sometimes it was on the house and sometimes it wasn't, but it wasn't a lot of money, it was like a hundred dollars or something like that. If, if we do this, we probably should have a set rate or a set policy. Having, I mean, I don't think that the township is trying to bill for any part of the expenses involved, or we kind of shouldn't have to pay two dollars for a notary.
I think that's, that's probably all that, that's not the intent of this. The intent is that we should have an in-house notary public that does notary work for the township.
But I...
And, 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 uh, so anytime we would have notary work that needs to be done, our notary would take, would take care of that, at notary's feet. Uh, now, uh, from my understanding of notary, not, when you become a notary, you can charge, uh, outside people, and if you're gonna do what, whatever, aside or whatever, you can do that. I think the current price I've been hearing is like five to seven dollars. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know what the current price is.
You know what the current price is, but, uh, for last thing, let's say...
Well, maybe if, if the township fronts any of the costs of becoming notary, township ought to receive some return from somebody walking off the street.
Right, if they're walking off the street and doing notary work, of course I would think that would be good.
I think we...
I mean, I think the township would keep all the money if I was here and somebody came in, because I had no interest in doing it on my own. I don't want people coming to my house.
Right, that's, that's the intent, you know, she's, if it's not, if it's not township business, and they're coming here stopping and saying, hey, you know, I got this title on it, notarized, and, and so, uh, if we're gonna offer that to the township, right?
Excuse me for interrupting, but I, I, there's, there's a court case that, that says township should not charge... No, they should not get into businesses that compete with other individuals who are trying to make a living, so I, I don't, if she's, Jessica's saying she does not wanna do any outside notary work, and that's great. So I, I don't think she's, look, if she has to notarize your signature, that's township-related business, or, or any of our signatures.
Right.
She can do that as a notary, and that's primarily what you want her to do.
Correct.
But she should not do any outside business and then charge people for it here at the township building, because you're taking money away from someone out there in the community who's a notary, and is doing that as their business. It's, it's kind of like more crazy situations if we opened up a hamburger stand and started competing with McDonald's. You know, that's, you know, it's, it's just not something that, it's not a township business.
Right.
My question says, we should have some rules about what we, who's gonna pay for the, the course and who's gonna be charged if anything's...
Right. Well, I think, I think the rules are, we're gonna pay for her training, she's only going to do notary work for the township. If people come in off the street and say, I need to have this deed notarized, you need to say, well, you need to go see John Smith or someone else who does, does notary work. I can't do notary work for you. You, you understand that, Jessica?
Yes, she does.
Okay, so it's pretty simple.
We talked about that pretty, kind of straight out, it's like, and that's...
Yeah, I mean, that's why I said you'd have to figure out if it's cost-effective. If you're only getting something notarized five times a year, that's way cheaper than paying for a class.
And the thing is...
It's also a convenience.
Yes, it is convenient.
It's not only a convenience, and not only for, for, for us, uh, but the planning will work, and we'll have things, and people come, plans come in, and, uh, these people are presenting plans that need notarized, uh, that's part of the, the whole process where they come in during the training, you know, uh... I don't know if they need to, either, you know, or not.
That, that's a comment that I have. So she would be performing notary services for the township for free, but what you're talking about, and that is a good question, is that sometimes the form is for a resident as well, and they need it notarized, is that...
Well, if it's township business.
So we just need to be clear, the area is township, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have an example. When I moved here and had to get some papers notarized for buying a house, I was a resident, and, and attended our meetings. I came down, I couldn't find anybody in the whole area that would notarize anything, at that point, that, Boulder was a place, didn't try all that hard, but, you know, I, it was easy, I came down here and I said, they, I said, well, we're gonna get some notarized, and she said, I can do it.
Well, well, she, she's down there, and we're not gonna do that anymore, for, if you need to get a deed notarized. You, you can go to Gettysburg. I, I would bet that just about every law firm in Gettysburg has, has a notary that can, and they do it relatively inexpensive, you know?
Yeah, I would say, namely, whatever you were talking about, was, uh, for township business, that there's nothing related to township, just like you said, wells, uh, plans that came in, uh, that needed to be notarized, to be sent to the courthouse.
It's a, it's a form that the township is requiring, it is required for you to have a notary.
Yeah, let's, let's suppose we need to get a needsment for someone riding the road. That has to be notarized, because that's to file at, at the courthouse.
Right.
So she can, even though the resident's signing it, she can do that, they're, they're doing that for the township. But it's not, it's like deeds, like Mr. Jackson referred to, we're not gonna be doing that.
So if you don't bring entirely there a Jessica, because you're letting the township say it, you can be there right now. Cause I did, but that was thrown on the floor, that turns on that, okay, that was a little question, we'll, we'll, anyhow. Now, the township would pay for it, like we did with Liesta, pay for her.
Okay.
Okay.
Do it somewhere.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hand writer.
Oh, we're missing our, we have a podcast here in the D.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. So, um, any other questions or any other...
Are we gonna vote on that?
Any, so we have a motion, we have a second, I call all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jessica, you're gonna approve to do that.
So now, now we need to recess our regular meeting and open the public hearing. You need to actually do that by a motion.
Yes, so I have a motion that we recess our, our regular meeting, and now we're gonna open our, uh, meeting up for, uh, let me see, for Comcast franchise hearing.
Kristen Ritchie.
Kristen.
Is there anywhere in particular you want me to...
Anywhere.
Send this to you?
You're not standing in front of the camera?
You can read and share, right?
Okay, since, since this is a public hearing, you, you need to swear, and Wendy, you're gonna have to be sworn in, because just to testify that you did put the ad in the paper?
Yes.
Okay, so if you can, whoever wants to testify, you can just stand and take an oath, nothing to do.
Right.
Just thinking, raise your right hand, yeah, yeah, cause you're gonna present testimony, right? Can you swear or affirm that the testimony about giving this hearing showed the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you up the God?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me just get, Wendy, the ad, um, did you run an ad in the, what was it, Gettysburg?
Gettysburg, yeah.
And you, do you remember now when you ran it? Did you run it on the date side?
The exact date, say, you told me, I don't have that information in front of me.
But you ran it twice and you, so it was properly advertised.
Yes, and we got the, uh...
You got the receipt from the head, okay, that's all I have to want to do, thank you, Wendy. Okay, if you could just state your name and business address for the record, so we have it.
Sure, uh, my name is Kristen Ritchie, R.I.T.C.H.D.Y., and I work for Comcast in external affairs. Uh, my business address is four six zero one Smith Street, Harrisburg, PA, one seven one zero I.
Okay, and do you wanna present testimony? Really, the hearing is about two issues. Number one is, um, your ability to meet the future needs of the residents of the township, and also, what has your performance been like during the current contract term? Have you received any complaints, any compliments, you know, any, anything? You might as well start with one, I, I guess, are you able to meet the future needs of the township with regards to cable?
Uh-huh, um, yes, just as background, um, the Federal Cable Act gives, I don't wanna assume anybody knows how this works. So, the, the township has a franchise agreement with Comcast, and that's all governed by the Federal Cable Act. Um, and so a part of the reason we're here for the public hearing is because our franchise agreement with the township expires in August of twenty twenty-two. So the three years prior to the expiration of the franchise is our time to discuss, we'd like to say Comcast's performance and the future needs of the township. And so I spoke to Mr. Jackson, he asked me to come to discuss that with you in preparation for the renewal of the, the franchise agreement. So we do have two years, um, to, to talk about this, and I can send, you know, a draft agreement, um, whenever, you know, you're ready to, to review that. Um, but essentially Comcast, um, you know, especially in these times, you know, we're really proud of the performance that, that we've, um, we've done, we, you know, constantly monitor our network, um, we haven't received, um, any significant complaints from anyone in the township. Um, we obviously provide TV, internet, phone, and home security service. Um, legally, the franchise agreement is only required for the cable TV service, but since we offer the other services, you know, it's, it's fine if questions about those come up during the, the franchise renewal process, but those are governed by different, um, laws and different legal entities, um, and...
Would you say, again, I, I, I miss it, what?
The, the Federal Cable Act, which governs the franchise agreement, that only governs cable TV service. That's the regulatory structure in place, and that act gives the individual municipalities the ability to negotiate the franchise agreement with Comcast. Um, the other services, the internet and phone are not covered by that, um...
You mean as far as the franchise fee and that sort of thing?
Right, the franchise fee, uh, as part of a franchise agreement, the township can request up to five percent of Comcast revenue in the township. That's only on cable TV service. Um, when we first started offering internet service, it was initially, um, labeled as a cable service, but there were some court cases, and I can provide references if, if you'd like, but it was determined that the internet was not a cable service, it was a telecommunications information service, so that, um, is not part of the franchise agreement.
So it's like I'm saying, that we're just gonna deal with cable TV?
Yeah, yeah. But I, yeah, yeah, we do, um, and the only thing I'll say about future performance, um, we understand there are some residents along Petcher Road, right on the border of Carol Valley, um, that do not have, um, Comcast service currently. Um, they approached us, originally Carol Valley approached us and asked us to extend cable to that area. I think there's maybe twenty or so homes in Carol Valley, about ten or fifteen in Liberty Township. And so, um, we sent out a letter through the borough, which went to some of your residents, and asked them to respond back to me, you know, expressing their interest. And so we're now in the process of, um, surveying that area to determine if we can extend our cable there. And so, um, we have to have more information about that in the next couple of weeks. Um, so, yeah, if you have questions or concerns?
Now, now, when you say about the, the Petcher Road, uh, as being the only place, that's the only road in our township that you don't have cable on?
Um, not saying that's the only one, that's the only one that residents have approached us and asked us to extend service to. I did provide a homes pass list, we call it, which essentially lists all the addresses where our cable passes, I think the township has a copy of that.
Township does not, you trusted it to me and I'm guarding it in my life.
Oh, sorry.
It's right, it's right here, and it shows all these street addresses where the Comcast has customers now.
So, yeah, that's part of this process, if residents...
Well, it is not, it is proprietary information, so, uh, you don't wanna see it spreading to your competitors or other unauthorized people.
It's fine to share, yeah, within the township, but...
Well, whether you want to take, swear, do, um, see.
Yeah, I would say, I'd definitely like to see where we, where we do have existing cable now versus where we don't. And like I said, I do know Petcher Road is one, uh, that people, said they would like to have an option with Comcast, but I believe there's others.
Crum.
Roads in our township.
Oh, they're... We live on the corner of Crum, and we do not have it. We called probably ten years ago and asked and...
Did you, did you take it at all?
She didn't know. Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you wanna, do, is that all you have to say?
No, I just, I was just saying my road doesn't.
I'm having a swing, if you wanna say something more.
Oh, okay, like, like I said, we definitely wanna see, uh, uh, where it is and where it's not, because like, like I said, I know it's a concern of some of the residents, other than just Petcher Road, um, like I said, I don't know what roads do that and what roads don't have it, I know I do, uh, but other than that, I mean, I don't agree, um...
I have that, I have the detailed information, authorized to show, you know, because, uh...
Yeah, it's okay to share it within the township staff, uh, just so you know, just we, we ask the township to sign a non-disclosure agreement when we provide information like that, so it is considered proprietary, so, but it says in the agreement that you can share it internally.
I was surprised at how wide the coverage is, I thought it'd be very, very limited, but it, uh, it's, it's, it's extensive. And I think that the numbers, as I understand, are from, uh, Carol Valley, they have about forty people over there
Mm-hmm.
that are really interested in getting signed up, and we have about five that are on the north side of Petcher Road, and we've got maybe one or two on the south side of Petcher Road, so it's a fairly small number, and this is Project D or something like that, and they call.
Carol Valley calls it Area D, I'm not sure exactly what that refers to.
Well, it's, it's a current project, and all, it is understated, you said, right now.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
And you should know in a couple of weeks, when are you gonna go ahead with that?
And just a third, yeah, it's around forty homes total, and, um, yeah, exactly a portion of those are in Liberty Township. The majority are in Carol Valley, though.
Cause I know we have, we have, I mean, our township's small, but we have, we got over, it's a pretty, pretty area.
Mm-hmm.
Like, there's a, a, a road area all over there, we got a lot of homes up back in there, uh, we got sixty-five homes listed on this trail there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I have a good plan, and I don't think they have any cable in here, I think it's all, uh, raw satellite, but I don't know. Uh, we have like a board, uh, coal springs and ragdew and places up that way, which is on another whole section of the township.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't even know if you guys provide services in that direction, which is probably another thirty to fifty, thirty to forty miles up in there.
Yeah.
Okay, I think in general, the, the gist of a meeting like tonight and the next, will, will be determining how much interest there is in these other areas. And I suppose we should start by taking a look at the, uh, what are the services right now.
Is that, is that something that we would do, Bob, or is that something that Comcast would do as far as?
Comcast will be doing it, but if we don't have anybody in any of those areas that knows about it or asks about it, uh, then it'll go just by default. But if we, unless it is public meetings, and Comcast is considered, if you're interested in Comcast, then, so.
Well, that's, yeah, exactly, um, we, obviously, if people call us, we have record that they wanted or want the service, but if they haven't called, then we don't have record of that, and just so you, you know, have a sense of how it works, if we get requests from a customer, we, um, would send out a, a crew to do what we call a survey, this is what we're doing now in that area, even if it's just one or two customers. Um, they would essentially look at the plan and say, okay, how do we get from where we are now to, to your home? You know, there's a lot of factors that play into the cost of that, it depends if the lines are aerial or underground, um. A lot of what we're seeing now is, um, the costs go up depending on the condition of the poles, so for example, um, where someone at the mercy of whoever owns the poles, since we have to get a full attachment agreement to attach the cable. So if they say, you know, this pole... So, if they say, you know, this pole is tall enough and needs replaced to make room for cable, then, you know, that's fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars to replace a pole or to do what they call made ready work. So, you know, those are the things we look at, and then we figure out how many homes there are, the total cost. We, you know, have certain allowance per home, and then that's how we decide.
That was the question I was going to ask, is how do you determine if you're going to win or not? Is it determined by how many people said yes, we want it, or is it determined by how much is going to cost you when you go to there?
It's a combination, so we assume a certain percentage of residents will sign up for service. Somewhere in the neighborhood of like forty or fifty percent. And if there's more than that that expresses interest, then that increases the construction allowance as far as the costs that we would contribute.
I have a question for you, and I've asked this to several Comcast representatives, whether they come to other meetings. Why doesn't Comcast just get into the satellite business and provide the same services by satellite to areas where it is the infrastructure costs are too great? I never, and they, no one has ever really answered that, other than to say, we're not licensed to do it. I'm thinking, okay, well, why don't you get licensed to do?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a good question, especially now. I can't tell you the number of calls and requests that we're fielding from rural areas that don't have high-speed internet. You know, we've invested a lot in our network, and I, I'm sure the company has looked at that. But there's other providers that are doing that, you know, the fixed wireless providers. And so, at this point, you know, we are sort of focusing on our strengths, which is, you know, the fiber, fiber networks we've already built.
Comcast doesn't serve my area, I have DirecTV, but I would, I like Comcast channels better for the Penn State games, you know, and the Phillies, and, you know, they have more vocal stuff than DirecTV. You know, where I'm at, DirecTV, they give me stuff out of Baltimore. I'm not an Orioles or Ravens fan, you know. You know, I just, I just don't know why, you know. I think it would solve a lot of your problems if you got into the satellite business also, as far as, but whatever.
Yeah, I'm sure, who knows what'll happen, you know, in the future. This is kind of, I feel like it's almost a pivotal time for the industry overall, you know, to see kind of how everything shakes out. There's a lot of different players out there, especially, you know, now that there's, you know, wireless companies are offering five G service, that, you know, that's essentially, I mean, I know that's not satellite, but it's kind of, kind of the same idea, you know. They deploy these cell towers, will be expanding into some of those areas as well. So, you know, like I said, you have two years, so if you hear from residents, you know, feel free to collect the information, pass it along to me. Mr. Jackson has my contact information.
What we advertised, and this was the opportunity for residents to appear, and so there's no emergency. So, I guess they must not have known the place.
You have a link on your website for people to go to Comcast, take them right to somewhere.
Yeah, if they call, they can enter number or go to our website, they can put in their address, and we would get that as well, so.
Because we can, we can put it on our website there too, for reminders for our residents. If they're interested, they need to contact Comcast alone, as they want to be considered for service.
Well, I, are you, we can enter into an agreement with Comcast, we can renew it. If we wanted to, we could sign an agreement tonight. So, I mean, I, I mean, if you want to forward, is the board willing to consider a draft agreement? Are you willing to forward this one?
I have one concern on those lines, and there's several of the municipalities are grouping together up around Gennisburg.
Yeah.
Cover on in Gennisburg, and they're duping it out with Comcast about the specific terms in the agreement.
Oh, yeah.
I, how that, I called them and I asked them how that was working out, and they said, it's sort of on suspension during this Corona war.
I've been talking to their, they, so Southland Hughes represents a lot of these municipalities. And so, what happened is they formed two consortiums essentially of five municipalities. There was Cumberland, Carol Valley, Mount Pleasant, Bonneville, Highland, which about half, three of those are finished. And then there's a new group of five that are negotiating now, and I've been in communication with their solicitor. And the only source of disagreement right now is a peg fee for community media. I don't know if you've ever heard of that. Okay, so you're aware, that's, the language in the agreement is all, is okay. There's a couple municipalities there that are requesting sixty, seventy cents per month added to the customer bills to go to community media, and we feel that that's a little high. We obviously, you know, appreciate what community media does and understand that some people want to support them. But we're just trying to keep the peg fee a little bit lower, because we don't want customers to get upset and cancel their, their service if their bill goes up by.
Well, we were originally part of one of those consortiums, I signed us up.
Okay.
And then I was told that we couldn't, because our expiration date is too far out. And they were going to start the people expiration dates in two thousand and twenty, and the next one will be two thousand and twenty-one, and the next one will be two thousand and twenty-two, so include that if we want.
Were you told that by the law?
By the use and whatever.
Okay, because from our perspective, as long as you're in that three-year renewal window, we're happy.
You could do it by ourselves, but the thinking was if you had five municipalities, they probably would have a little more resources to negotiate that. Each little township did it on its own, so. And that was supposed to have been wrapped up by now, but it, that interrupted a little bit, so.
Yeah.
But it should be coming through, I would think, this year. I'd be curious to see, so you have a rough draft of an agreement with those other five municipalities? Do you mind forwarding that, that, the copy of that to us? So, you know, maybe send it to the chairman or to the secretary, so you can see that, that all the supervisors get it. And you say the only bone of contention is the media fee. Is that something that you're, I don't, I don't know if you're really concerned about the community?
We discussed that in a couple of meetings, and we was not in favor of it. We had the media, they came, they came, they were not really, really. They didn't go as far as to tell us, because we wasn't really interested.
Well, mainly, because we had operating people trying to sell products, instead of the salesmen trying to sell products. Their thrust was, we're going broke, you gotta, you gotta...
So, why, what are you giving our township residents? Adam, you must have done watch, but you weren't paying for it, you go broke, sorry. That's kind of...
Well, and that, my understanding too, because I attended an Adams County COTD meeting early on in this process. And I believe they did, you know, our thought was, and their thought was, if each municipality just chips in a little bit, it could be like five or ten cents per month, and, you know, that would give them a certain amount of funding, and it would be fair, and it would be spread out across the county. But there were enough municipalities that were not interested that that never materialized. And so, now, like I said, the struggle is, well, if, you know, one municipality wants seventy cents, and the other ones have zero, how are the customers in that municipality going to feel when they have that extra charge on their bill? So, it's a difficult, you know, situation, but we're kind of doing our best to wade through it. But each franchise agreement, obviously, even if you're in the consortium, each franchise agreement is separate. So, for example, those five that are negotiating together, two wanted a peg fee and three didn't. So, the three that passed are the three that didn't, and the two that wanted a peg fee were still negotiating what that amount will be.
So, I guess you can send us one without the peg fee.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other author presence?
No, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much for coming, and we look forward to seeing that.
Assuming you've got some new developments, what, what else?
Okay, yeah, I will mention, just in case you don't know, we have an Internet Essentials program for low-income families, so anyone that receives any kind of government assistance can get internet for nine ninety-five a month. And if they apply before the end of this year, they get two months free. So, we've been offering that, you know, especially for families that have kids that are, you know, homeless, school. So, we know anything you can do to get that out to your residents, I guess I'm going to listen, they'll hear that.
And that's low income?
Yeah.
Okay, what's that related to low income?
What, I'm sorry, what's the?
So, what's, what's the criteria for low income?
Oh, it's anyone who is part of the school lunch program or receives any kind of, you know, public assistance, like housing assistance or social security, not, I guess, there's SSI and then...
Medicaid.
Yeah, yeah, they would all qualify.
Okay, and how would they go about it, or not just con, con?
I don't have the number, there's a separate phone number. I can, I can get it to you, I should have brought some flyers in. It's, it's called Internet Essentials, so you can either go to the website, or there's a phone number for Internet Essentials that you can call.
That's good, I would say I hadn't heard about that before.
Can you see that back? Do you want me to see if that gets on our website?
Yes, Ms. Ritchie, you, you were on an email with me earlier. Could you just send me that information?
Sure.
Oh, you can send the draft agreement to me as well.
I have some flyer, I have some brochures in my car, too, I can even leave like a little stack here. I know not many people are probably coming to the township office right now, but at least you have them available.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, we can put the flyer, we can scan it or something, put it on the website.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we don't have any questions or anything anymore to do in this hearing. We would have turned Comcast's franchise hearing at eight thirty. And then we will resume our regular meeting, subsequent to eight thirty-one. And you will say if you would like to, whether you would like to do what's next. That's totally up to you.
Okay, yeah, don't take it personally, but, you know, I'm trying not to be inside. This is the first, this is the first meeting I've come to since March, so. Yeah, we've been working from home, and, yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Sure, I will run back in and bring some of the flyers, so that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm safe, you're fine.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our June third, twenty twenty regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have an opportunity to read over this? And if so, could I get a motion to approve the board?
Soon move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next thing we have is our treasures report. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the treasures report from June? And if so, do I have a motion to, to accept the treasures report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then to our invoices, has everyone had an opportunity to read the invoice? And there's some stuff on there for, that rates are after your approval. Has everybody had an opportunity to review that? If so, do I have a motion to approve the expenses?
Oh, question.
Okay.
Uh, we pay municipal code lines, would we resolve that?
Yes, well, we, what were they, I did get in touch with them. We will always check when you now to hold that check.
Yes, as part of the motion, just, just say it won't include the PNC.
Yes, go ahead. Just, yeah, we'll take that one off of the motion to accept the expenses report. Then the other one will be after my discussion with them tomorrow, when we try to resolve that. So, do I have a second, or a motion to approve expenses excluding the municipal alliance bill?
Soon move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the last one we have here is our payroll. Does everyone have an opinion, payroll, if so, do I have a motion to pay our payroll?
I'll do it, I'll take a motion to accept the payroll.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, down, down here to our police report, our police officer had to go out and call, so she's going over with me, with us. So, what I'll do is briefly go across this with you. They had two hundred and fifty-eight hours total hours for June. Had a hundred and eighty-three patrol hours, on-call was thirty-four, traffic detail thirty-two. They drove one thousand three hundred and twelve miles for the month, forty-three citations. But to commend our officers for the citations that they're out there doing now, for almost eighteen warnings, nineteen incident reports, and PS, which state police, had five calls. They used a hundred and eleven gallons of gas for the month of June. Of course, we also see the district region, had some online training, did a DUI and a patrol. We also had a first aid CPR class that they participated in on June the tenth. And we got some money from a grant also. Of course, they did the tires and rotations. If you go down, go down to the police report, I'm not going to run down the whole thing, just look down the whole thing for a number of complaints, hangups, and different things that they were doing throughout the month. Like I said, Sherri's not here, so she helped us go over this. But you can see on the other side, the officers on page number, I guess it's three, the different officers of what they did, Sherri, took a hundred and forty-three complaints. Mr. Reason took a hundred and thirty-seven, and Brian took twenty-two, for a total of three hundred and twenty complaints. And I'm excited to do a breakdown into each one of the officers, what they did through the month. Like I said, Sherri wrote twelve citations, totaling nineteen hundred dollars for the month. Then she also had a total for traffic, a warning, she had five of those. Mr. Reason, he had one citation, he wrote thirty traffic citations with a amount of five thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars in citations that he did. And then Brian had one citation of a hundred and twenty-three. Total of seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars in fines were written in June with sixty-one citations. So, I'm going to commend our police department, they're out there with rage, they're doing a great job. But I just gave the report for you, gave it just in time.
Good.
As I was saying, so thanks again for our police department, great job they're doing. The residents are definitely paying attention, they're seeing our officers, they're making comments about seeing and what they're doing in the roads, and so, great job, Sherri.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the zoning. The zoning here, we have four permits that were rented out in, in June, total of three hundred and sixty dollars. Once for the truck garage, once for a replacement porch, and another garage. And I'm not sure what the new, the one on Griffin, Terry Lane, I'm not sure what that abbreviation is for. But it was three, before permits, reducing to three hundred and sixty dollars. Okay, red department, okay, red department, we're trying to get this quick here, we're not going to say it's not. A lot of things are going on in June, but fuel, we used about fifty-two gallons of unleaded fuel, fifty-two five in diesel, and all three diesel, we used a hundred and eight gallons, which means that we had the backhoe and the mower running a lot on the roads this, this past month. So, we drove sixty-seven miles in the one truck and a hundred and ninety-one in the other truck. And then in our new pickup truck, seven hundred and sixty-two miles that we rode, that we did in the month of June. In June, we did quite a bit of ditching work in June, got a lot of pipes open, did a lot of brush cutting back and a lot of rage in the township. We had, started working on our wall out here, of course, every piece of the wall. We can set the wall up, and as the other blocks come in, we will continue to finish that off. Parking lot is now ready, if we choose to go that direction. The pavement now is ready to be paved, so the red department is quite busy this month, doing a lot of those different things. Do you have any comment on the red department?
No, but we've spent a lot of time up on Glad Hill Road, Steve Hill, and so you got dishes and you don't notice them. But we spent a lot of time up there, got a lot of stuff cleaned up. We still have a couple of little small projects finished up there, I think, and then continue on with what we found with all our cower inspections. We have some separations and resets and cleanings throughout the township.
Right, that's true. So, there's a lot of things, we did have a resident that, we had an initial understanding that up on Blackfield again, where we have a ditching issue right along the road. It is a very, to the point that it's jeopardizing the road. The resident actually approached... Uh, the resident actually approached the township about putting pipes in there to stop the erosion, and, uh, under the, uh, since he did that, we met with him, talked with him, and he agreed to purchase the pipe that we agreed to put it in. Which I thought was a great opportunity for us to do something in coordination with the resident, uh, so we received the pipe that's out there, we'll schedule that within the next couple of weeks to get that put in, uh, for him. Uh, he did call me today, and I did confirm to him that we do have the pipe, so if he sends his check in, we'll schedule the work. Okay, so, uh, on a different, another, uh, thing that I wanna finalize here before we, uh, get off the red department, is I passed out the pictures to you, uh, and I wanna specifically show, uh, in some of these pictures. Uh, this is Glad Hill, then we're talking down here, and Glad Hill, if you look at the pictures that you have, you'll see, uh, on the right-hand side of the road there, that, uh, we have very deteriorating and coming apart. This is the road that we spent two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on three years ago, uh, that was, did not have the tack put on it, and they didn't, they wanted to settle with us. Well, unfortunately, gentlemen, they kept telling us this road wouldn't come apart, this road wouldn't come apart, this road is coming apart. And here's the pictures to show that this road is coming apart, uh, the tack code, you can see the old layer of road and the new layer on top of it, there's no bogging, and now it's chipping away. This is only one spot on Glad Hill, and it happens to be down by, uh, Glad Hill and, uh, Jacob's Church right there is where this, this particular picture is. But we have other incidents up along the road that is cracking, uh, the sides of the roads are coming apart, so, uh, I'm glad that we do have that money in the reserve, uh, for this repair. But the seven-year, ten-year, it'll never happen scenario was a lie, 'cause it's happened, and here it is. Not only under that same project, we reclaimed steel and marker up here, and we paid thirty, some thirty-eight thousand dollars to have it reclaimed, and if you see in your second picture there. I had, Wendy for, Wendy and I have problems of trying to print it off, but if you see in the, uh, in your picture, well, I'll show you, right here, right there. This here, this here, this here, this here, these are stones that are coming up through the road and splitting the road apart, uh, and this is, I said, this is only one section, uh.
Where, where is that on the road? Is that on the Steve Hill or on the top?
On the Steve Hill, it's up right there between, it's not on the top.
This is, this is steel, and then, are these all wet, or come blurred?
That's steel. Yeah, that's steel.
This one with the shadow, this is steel?
Yes, that's.
Okay, thank you.
That's Mr. Steel is standing there.
And that's only one picture, that's only one picture that I can get you to print off, because the other ones were served as a work print, but there's like four pictures of that road, so.
All right.
But, but that one didn't have any, um, tack coat at all, did it?
No, this one didn't have a tack coat at all, you're right, this one here was reclaimed.
This is not a tack coat, probably.
This is not a tack coat, this is, this is another whole problem on the cattle, where they reclaimed it, they didn't, they didn't grind up all the rocks and stuff, so now the rocks are pushing through, uh, the red road. So, uh, I guess we, what we need to think about is how we're gonna address this, we're gonna have to definitely address Glad Hill, and what's going on here with that, I mean, 'cause that's the part.
If I may, Glad Hill, part of the, the reason why that broke up like that, if you remember, Dave George was up there himself shoveling stone.
Yes.
And, uh, when the company put the, the road up there, they did put that apron dropping into the parking area, and this, this one of Glad Hill Road is on the backside of the church, Jacob's Church, Cross and Raven Rock.
Wait a minute, are we talking steel marker or?
No, no, wait, 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 Glad Hill. Yeah, all right, this, this is the, this represents here.
Yeah.
The rear parking lot for the church of Jacob's.
Yeah.
So, when Nate Black thought.
Yeah.
Of his line, okay, they only did the road, they didn't put the apron on the drop-down into that parking lot, which caused that to.
Break up, right, and that was all the way up the road, 'cause they didn't put any, it was just.
Now, is the problem, is it the eighth lack of apron or?
It appears to me.
Well, here's the, but.
Or a tack coat.
No, that, that, because here, right here, this is, the apron should have been over here, this is actually the road, and there's there, the tack, what has happened now is the new road came apart from the old road. And the tack pin was the holding together, and that's what happened, the new road has broke off, and you see in your picture, there's line, there's cracks here and here, and it's, it's gonna continue to go on. That's the whole way up the road, we have that one up the whole way up the road in different sections, we have the crappy, out in the middle of the road where the tack pin is not placed, and it's cracked apart. So, at some point in time, this is gonna make you aware, because if I believe correctly, and Wendy can, can probably verify that if she has to, our agreement with them is expired, correct?
Yes.
So, we have their recourse to go back and get them to know.
Well, this is a section repair, I, I think we can seal off the ones on steel and marker, we gotta keep the water out.
Yeah, the silver marker, we can probably, yeah, she probably, what, what we can do there is probably do same things we did out here, is go out, put that fault seal, we'll probably seal the whole entire way. Uh, and that would probably take your steel marker at least for a while, uh, this one here, we might have to repair this.
Intersection.
And that's, and, and it may be, I mean, we may be able to get away, if we seal plate this one here, next year, we may be able to continue to turn over that. But what's my trouble, you remember this?
We would help seventy-one thousand dollars.
Yes, for that part.
For that purpose, if we, if, if we were into a problem.
Yes.
And that, and that closed the deal out.
Correct, and that's where we're at.
How, how long ago did we do this, when, when did we do Glad Hill?
Did we settle in twenty seventeen?
Twenty, yeah, it was twenty, twenty, yeah, it was three years ago, twenty, yeah, it's three, seven, three.
It happened in twenty sixteen, and then I think the settlement might have occurred in twenty seventeen, the road was completed in twenty sixteen, the settlement didn't occur till, I think, twenty seventeen.
They did in two, uh, two seasons?
Yeah, we did the settlement in twenty seventeen, they did this very one day.
Okay.
In, in twenty sixteen, I think it was April twenty sixteen, yeah, is when they did this here. So anyhow, I just wanna make sure that the board is aware that we do have an issue up there that we need to address, uh, and, uh, so.
Aye.
All right, uh, other than that, as far as the red department, um, I believe I'm done, unless anybody else has any questions for the red department.
Anybody online with any questions so far?
Nobody online?
Who?
Yeah, they dropped out of here. Secretary of Labor?
Um, I just, mostly for the month, I just wanted to let you know that I am getting a lot of calls from people who are interested in purchasing property in the township, and I think that might be increasing, um, the bill to zoning. So, these are people who are looking at property, they have a lot of questions, we have to do, uh, research here, uh, they're looking, oh, has this been purged? Do you have, uh, old, uh, perches, or does this already have septic prurits that were issued? There's a lot of undeveloped property coming up for some reason, it's been a very busy month, you know, people from out of state who are, are looking to buy some of the land, what can I do with it, and I can't, like, but just lots of questions, what type of houses? So, I'm just saying, that is, that, that has never been so prevalent before, these past, uh, two months, it's just been blowing up like crazy. And you'll see, uh, a lot of research on the P M C A bill, and, uh, that's what's, uh, that's projecting a lot of that.
And that's some of the questions that I'll have for the board, and we're being there for it.
And I think what, uh, you need to do is, uh, maybe, I, I'm sure we can't prevent people from calling them, getting information.
No, but you know what?
We should probably say, hey, you, you're not gonna spend more than ten minutes on it or something, I don't know, you can.
Well, exactly, and if they're looking for property, they need to contact a local realtor or somebody to answer those questions, I don't think it's in the township's case.
Well, sometimes it is a realtor, it's not.
Talk to them about what's for sale and what's there.
No, but if someone, I mean, I could, uh, sometimes they go put in a right to know, that really hasn't been, I haven't been bothered with that, if they're asking me a per, a perco, we just go and look.
But what I, and what I'm saying is, instead of going into detail with these people, how do you contact a realtor and say, you know, you need to answer those questions?
No, sometimes it is a realtor, though.
It is a what?
A realtor, it's calling, it's not just a individual, sometimes it's a real estate agency calling.
Tell them to contact the lawyer. Really? 'Cause, like, if, if you're thinking about buying property, you're gonna need to contact a lawyer or title company, have them do the title suits anyhow.
No, I understand, something quite similar.
Because we're the boss, and I have to look at the board, because we have, they, we have a couple of hours, yeah, on that day, and we're paying them forty-five dollars an hour.
Yeah.
To get the information that the person might be getting in that reading news.
Right.
And we're getting charged for it.
Yeah, 'cause they say, hey, I wanna, what's yours, though, we have the information online, the current zoning is online for them to read, um, they're, they're asking questions of, what are your, you know, what can I do with this property, you know?
I think some of our justice, the young Danny, asked for a drip line.
To do the irrigation.
To do the irrigation system, Ross.
Well, well, that, that, that's, yeah.
That doesn't, we don't.
You don't need to answer that, I mean, go out on the field and look, and you'll see it.
Yeah, I think that we need direction on how to handle this call, in a, in a, in a friendly manner, because we don't wanna just seem like we're rude and ridiculous.
I don't wanna see anybody cut off of Denise when they call with those questions, but I, I'm certain that we can come up with something.
Yes.
That will take a lot of that away from you in few sentences, or whatever, and be done with it, um, when it comes down to it, you know, if, if we get approached by, uh, lawyers, I guess, we would have to answer some questions.
Well, we'll see this, but, yeah, yeah, see, the problem is.
That's our hand. Yeah, the problem is, like, if they say, what can I do there, or, or, you know, if they say, I'm, I'm thinking about doing this, can I do that, I mean, I, I guess that's a, that's a difficult question for you to answer.
That's why I had to refer someone to the zoning, because I'm like, you know, like, zoning will, I'm not, but I can't interpret this.
Go ahead, Katie. Yes. Go ahead.
Is she hearing?
Yes.
She has to listen on her phone, if she's listening on the computer, it's ten seconds behind.
Are you listening to the sound of the computer?
Hello?
Um, this is Judy, can I jump in?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, she's not realizing it's ten seconds behind.
It's ten seconds behind, uh, Wendy's saying, uh, she could use her phone.
The phone is blocked.
Um, this is Judy, can I jump in?
Please do.
This is, I couldn't, you're not here. You're not muted, are you?
Oh, we're muted, I hear you.
You'll see a line for it.
Your voice muted.
No, we're not muted.
This is Judy, can I jump in?
This would be.
Okay.
This would, yeah, yeah. She had problems running around before.
Judy, can you hear me? Hello? So now.
Don't hang up, you have to push that button again so it's green before you hang up.
Okay. All right, all right, I'm talking, we're gonna go to the next, and you do hear the side here, um.
Well, if they're calling about land for sale, builders that come to take care of most of that, and, and they should have the information.
Well, they say, hello, in your township, uh, are these things allowed? I can answer simple questions, like.
I have a report, but I shouldn't be answering questions here, this is something you might just report, but it really has to do with planning permission, I don't know whether or not.
Is she really, she, she talking to them? She's talking to them. She doesn't know she's on the, she's talking, you know, how. Okay, so what I'm saying is, if they say, hi, you know, how, how do I get garbage service, how do I, uh, you know, hook up to my sewer, sewer, I'm like, oh, we have private, well, private septic here, you know, I answer those simple questions. And, and that's fine, and then move on, and, and call parks garbage, and you don't have to use garbage service, but that's a service that we contracted, uh, you, you need to dispose of your, you know, whatever properly, but it's not required.
Case is.
So I answer those questions, but someone says, hi, I'm looking at a piece of property in your township, can I build this in, you know, on this particular road, can I have this type of house, or this, what do you wanna do with that?
Submit your plans.
Or, or, or you can say, you can say, here, here, our here's our zoning ordinance on the website, and you look it up there, and if you don't understand it, you really, and again, you, you really need to contact an attorney.
Okay, so, we shouldn't be telling them to contact P M C A for a zoning question.
Right.
We should say, it's online, and if you have trouble, you need to contact an attorney to interpret it for you. No, I need direction, it's really my.
Well, and the thing is, I think it's like we do, I think we talked to, we talked to, uh, uh, P A municipal for, if an individual has a question that. They wanna ask, they can pay the zoning people, they can pay the zoning people to answer their question, but they can't.
That's true, that's true, well, okay, that just needs to be worked out with P M C A, and they.
I think we, I think we said that from the get-go.
We did, if somebody.
If P M C would bill, if someone came to them, uh, that they would bill the resident or the person.
You have to tell them ahead of time, there's a charge for this service.
Right, there's a charge.
Right, the township's not gonna pay you for this service, I mean, right.
Right, we're looking, right now, what I'm seeing with the billing is they're gonna not.
That's correct.
And I said, and that's what I said today, I said, no, you can't even bill enough, I said, these people are only living in our township, you're, you're, you're using our township, got tax for the dollars. On the potential that someone might decide to, like, bill.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, basically, I can refer them to the ordinances that are online, and if they go on their own to see that's our zoning officer to call, then P M C A needs to be on that end saying, you know, are you, do you own this property? Find out if it's a person who actually owns the property, or if it is someone who needs to buy, and once it gets to that point, they will have to let them know, there's a fee for this service.
Just like the John.
Or contact your own attorney to.
It's just like they called John Liska, and white information for John Liska, well, the township's not gonna pay for him to answer their questions, if they want his services, they don't have to pay for his service.
And I think that's gonna come up with K P I too, because a lot, like, is this, if this keeps going as it is, people are gonna have more and more questions about septic and things like that too, and they're gonna be going over, oh, there's the S E O, and the pump, K P I. So we need to instruct both companies, that that's what, well, we, we need them to do.
And also, probably, like, thirty years ago, so we're, we're going through files.
Well, we, we, those are our files that we, they can give them that right to know, and that's free, uh, we're not, I, I, you know what I mean? So, if we can do that, if you don't want us to get into the property file and sort of, something to write to know, we can definitely do that, but then once they do that, we still have to do, so please make the list and tell us when you guys are ready. But we don't wanna be charged, you know, that's a hard part of our job, but we don't wanna be charged for, um, by P M C A or up and out of that service.
Absolutely.
But we still, we'll most likely be getting in the property file and getting them.
Like I said, I was supposed to be back to get back with them, they're supposed to get back to me tomorrow, so tomorrow, I'll make, I'll make sure they understand.
Okay.
That when a dress, or someone contacts us in that manner, they need to bill them, not bill us.
Yeah, I think previously I had a conversation with K P I, because we were getting a lot of, uh, charges from residents, and I said, hey, what's going on? I said, you know, and, and they tried to reassure me that they would only be doing it if it was a few minutes of a call, and not excessively, they would be answering questions.
Okay, anything else on the side?
No, that was really it, um, Jessica, it's great, we've been working together as much as we can, and, uh, again, we're some of the liquid fuels things to enter the other day, I can put the class on, on some of, uh, liquid fuels spending. And as she gets into her new job and more things come up, um, we'll work around what's going on, and I'll give her more training and things to do.
Thank you, uh, planning commission, uh, main family reunion, Judy, are you able to hear us now? Hello? Okay, well, we apologize that we're not able to communicate for whatever reason, but, uh, hopefully we'll get that rectified by next month, and.
I did hear she said she had something she wanted to talk about, so.
No, she did.
So they, she did give you a memo, did you see that, it was laying right on your desk when you brought it?
Oh, that's what I did, yes.
It says, and she did, she gave, she brought it over today.
Yes.
Do you wanna read that into the video?
Planning commission meeting was not held, which I already said, there are only currently notes, uh, submissions to be reviewed, and plans, and supervises the planning commission to continue to develop burn ordinance. Uh, will be on hold until the July eighth, uh, that's, that's, uh, she did report it for her memo for tonight, uh, okay, all right, well, hopefully we'll get back in touch very soon, and we can talk, I'll talk over tomorrow. And talk to her about this tonight, too. Okay, we'll move on to old business, uh, the treasury bond, uh, claim, uh, we have tonight in front of us a final, a full final release for that. John, you wanna speak on this release, uh, for the Cincinnati insurance final?
Well, I believe we previously discussed in an executive session, uh, they're paying us an additional five thousand dollars, and they've already paid us about six. So, for eleven thousand dollars total, we'll be releasing Cincinnati, um, and that's, that's the end of the case with them, we cannot go after them for any more monies, um. There was some debate as to whether or not they even, if you remember, pay us five thousand, but I'm, I'm glad that we sent that letter out, or, or Ms. Sanders sent that letter out, and we were able to recover an additional five thousand. We just need to make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign this final release, and, um, then that's, oh, the end of this case. Now, both travelers have already recell.
Now, both travelers have already settled with them for about close to $70,000. But both travelers and Cincinnati have the right to go after Liesta for any monies they paid us. I, I don't know, my best guess is they probably won't, but they have, they're subjugated for any amounts that they paid us, they have the right to go after them.
Okay, do we have a motion to sign the final release, releasing Cincinnati? Did we see the check, correct, Wendy?
No. Well, I haven't received any check.
They only see the check for $5,503.64.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna send us the check though.
Should, are we giving them a release after we signed the check? I haven't spoken to them at all.
Well, you need to call, you need to call attorney Sanders and find out how they're going to handle the transaction.
And how does the board want to handle it? Do they want me to wait for the check? And I will call her, I don't know what.
I, I would say that the board's motion should be to sign the release and to follow attorney Sanders' instructions with regards to.
Whether they send it prior to receiving the check.
Right, yeah, whatever she says, because I don't know what she's worked out with that Amy Benz.
Okay, do we have a motion before I can run the supervisors?
No. I like the motion that we signed the release.
I'll say.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. I thought you were saying more.
All right, we can move on to the parking lot, about something that Wendy. We all had an opportunity, we needed parking lot bids, there's three different bids that we had. And what these bids are, are current prices today, if we do the parking, if we decide to go forward, we have the parking lot paid. These are the three bids that we got, we actually have four bidders, but only three submitted their bids to us. For consideration, again, one of the things I do with the parking lot because of the oil prices and everything now is lower than it will be next year, the cost to do it next year will be, could be potentially a lot higher. Right now, there's one bid we have for wells is if you want to do tar and chip, it's $10,500, which is not a recommendation from all three of the bidders, because tar and chip only lasts about three to five years. If we want to get a big well off the vest for the money that we're doing this right now, they were recommending that we do the paving of the parking lot and seal it in the future, and it will last us approximately about 20 to 25 years. It's about, well, $10,500 is their bid for tar and chip. $15,000 if they were wanting one plus three inch, pave over the non-fried mill and asphalt, and that's from Wells. AAA is Cincinnati FA, three inch, pay, they didn't get us a bid to do, to do tar and chip, because they don't have us any tar and chip. There's this $15,365. Hello?
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 Yes.
These phones are messed up. Anyway, I would like to make a comment about that treasury bond situation.
Well, go ahead, Cindy, go say, we moved past that, but go ahead.
Yeah, well, I've been trying to get through, I mean, this phone is all messed up. The, I, I just want to put on, I just want to say, it is sorely disappointing that nobody has been able to come up with a way to go after her, and it's all accepted, $70,000 for $300,000 missing, that is just disappointing.
It sure is, I have to agree with you.
I can't, I mean, I can, y'all are going in and out, so I can barely hear you, but, I mean, the supervisors, the prior supervisors to y'all, let this township down, and I feel like the attorney let this township down. We are out $300,000 with 70 grand, that's just, that's disappointing, that nobody seemed a way to go after her and charge her with anything. I, I just don't see why this is possible. Anyway.
Definitely understand that.
And I just wanted to let you know, it is disappointing that this is what y'all accepted.
Yep, sure is.
Unfortunately, thank you, Cindy, I do, definitely agree with you, you know that, but it is random course, and that's where we're at, unfortunately, sorry about that.
Okay. Good evening.
Yeah, you're all right.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the AAA is at $15,365, and then we have the other candidate that gave us a price, came in $25,405 for the paving project.
You said that's canon?
Canon, it's $25,405. AAA is $15,365.
Obviously.
And then Wells, Wells is $15,000 even.
Obviously Wells is cheaper.
Wells has done this.
Buy a little.
Wells has done a lot of work in our township, and they had a really good reputation. They said if we decided we wanted to do it, they would do it fairly quickly, wouldn't take long, since we already had, get all the truckload, we did all the truckloads, so everybody would stop. So anyhow, we do have, we do have the resources to do this, I believe if we want to do it, we should do it now, because we're ready to do it now, the parking lot's ready. And cost effectively, I think we even get a better first next year. So that's my thought, any other thoughts on that?
As I said earlier, I, I think if we're going to do it, there's the opportunity to do it. My only reservation is one of safety and ice on blacktop roads. I can't prove that, and hopefully I'll never have to.
Well, that's one basic too, Bob, but what you understand, you saw what we've done, we leveled this parking lot up by 12 inches of foot, and we can't get any higher, and so it really has taken out the grain on it for, so.
And, and just to let you know, we had that in mind as well, we talked, we made sure that all the downstream drains were all functioning, draining well. We do need, however, we know we've got to do that, is we've got to go with these valleys, we don't want the overflow, we can prevent it.
Right.
Well, what we're gonna have to make sure we do, if we should, on a rare occasion, get a coating of ice on the ground. Hey, we'll keep an eye on it. We have a tour right here, we can take care of that.
Yeah, so, okay, so, any other discussion, you have any, any discussion on it?
No, I'm disappointed too, but it is what it is, and we'll have to move forward.
Disappointed in what?
Oh, oh, I'm talking about something else, I'm sorry. I looked down, I looked down at something. I was going by the advice of John George the other night, he said, you know, blacktop's the way to go, number one, number two, if you want to do it, do it now.
Do it now.
You know, marrying what you said, Bob, so I agree with that 100%.
Well, I would make a motion that we accept Wells' proposal for $15,000 to blacktop the driveway in the parking lot with three inch over there of nine five millage, you have a second?
So.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will inform them tomorrow, that they can schedule out and take care of this as soon as possible. Okay, codification, codification, I have been in contact with KPI, went in and sat down on top of them, and they did give us some recommendations to the codification, actually, it was only one, he was in agreement with everything else that we needed to do, so.
What have you got in your mind there?
This is codification.
That's what it consists of.
Is that the learning page thing Bob began at two, two meetings ago? Do you have a copy of it? It's not, I don't include it every month.
Yeah, it's the same. Anyhow, I met with KPI, and we discussed their part of the codification part, we reviewed, reviewed it, and he only had one recommendation, which he did send to us. Did you send that, you did send that, I'm sure you did, I saw it, yeah, you sent that.
Was that the?
That'd been the sewage.
That sewage, you mentioned, I forwarded that email.
Yeah, the sewage one, he recommended that we adopt the sewage, that we implement the changes that they recommended in the sewage. He actually added a few things about the holding tanks to that, so we don't really add that to the codification. Mr. Lisker has had an opportunity to hear over some of the, some of the, did you not?
Yeah, I sent him an email with my comments, I guess it just needed it forward.
That's on, they have that, yeah.
So that's been done, the only one I have left.
Right here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the only one I have left now to meet with is Clem from PA municipal, which I called again today, and we stretched the summer meeting to go over their portion of it, but I did tell him he had to step in, so he's gonna have to find. So that's what we're out of the codification.
Okay, I need my name comment for that, is the board, I have not sent this to General Code yet, because I wanted to have this meeting first to allow any of the board to object to any of the comments that were sent. I mean, you'll still have time to review it, and it's not getting adopted, but do you agree and support that I send the information that we received from Mr. Lisko and from KPI to go ahead and send that off to, for them to add?
You can do that, and we can wait until.
It's up to you. You can have more time to review it, and then if you have any questions, you can bring it up in August.
I, as I went over Jones's comments and read through it, I got a whole list of questions. I'm waiting about understanding what they're talking about. I mean, we got numbers 275-001, what's that mean? Where did that number come from? Who made it up?
Well, it's, it's, oh, that, that comes from, if you look in this here, it's referencing their numbers.
Well, I found that one, but where did it come from originally? Is there, is that key in a D? I don't want to tie this meeting with 10 questions, but what I'm suggesting is that somebody ought to give me an opportunity to ask these questions about what these numbers mean.
Okay, yeah, well, I can show you right now, see, here, here, in this editorial, page 44, yeah, in this editorial on legal analysis, seeing Mr. Jackson, they have here, up here, question 275-001.
What's that mean?
Well, that's just their, that's just their, their reference for the question.
They're not sequential, I mean.
No, they're, they're not.
They're sort of right, and then they skip some, and you said you could look at all of them, you looked at part of them.
No, well, I, I just went by their numbering system, where, how they came up with it, I don't know.
It is, it is all the, the.
Yeah, everything, everything that I'm referencing is in this editorial legal analysis, they start off, see, and it, and it references.
I see what it says.
It, it references their, that's how they're going to have the chapters in the code. If you see here the contents, okay, it's, it's chapter, let's say, the animals, chapter 95. Buildings numbering, chapter 103, the one you referenced, chapter 275.
Subdivision in land development.
In land development, so, so they, under, so they then put 275-001, that's question one for subdivision in land development. So that, that's where it's coming from.
Is this all of the ordinances that we have?
No, those are only the questions.
Those are the only ones that they wanted to question, the rest of them, here.
You, you have that, Mr. Jackson, I sent everyone an invitation and a link to access the entire code online. And if you didn't receive that, you can call me, and I can help you set that up again. You can go in there and then, or you can call General Code, there's a telephone number on there with our contact, and they should be able to walk you through it. But that's where all of the ordinance are currently, that those questions are referring to.
They can't talk with you, if I can't reach them on their telephone, they're on permanent vacation.
I've been able to reach them.
I called, I compared, I called them six times on that number.
Oh, maybe if you send them an email and ask them to call you, I've been communicating with them.
They're home, working from home because of the COVID.
Well, I, I talked to them.
Let's see, we work someone out, I'll get you back to you.
Yeah, I, I, it goes right on down, let me talk about a, what is it there?
And maybe we invite them back.
Do I need a pass, I'll go see them if I need to.
They said that they would hold a class for you.
A pass, word, and ID, do I need that to get the information?
What I sent you is a.
Do you want to go to Rochester, New York?
I sent you a link.
I don't sure I did.
I, I sent you a link which gives you your ID, and then when you set up your account, you get a password. And they offered to do a training, they did a training for me, so do you want that?
Mostly just understanding what their numbers mean, the dates, how many, how many ordinances have they got in this file? Can we get a copy of the ordinance code they got somewhere?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, they're all on that.
The manuscript, they called, where's the manuscript? They said they've got a manuscript, or.
It's online.
It's all online.
Yeah, don't forget it's online.
And you can access it through the email that I sent.
Well, let's see if they can contact and see if they'll come down here and try.
I, maybe a little.
They're gonna do a video training like they did with me.
A video training?
They will do a video training.
Maybe a one-on-one with you would help me get through Billy's, some of these questions, so I could make it happen.
Well, in the end, Mr. Jackson, I can just tell you that you're going to get a book, probably about that thick, about that size, and it's going to have every ordinance in the township in it, and, and these numbers here, that 275, you'll be able to turn to 275 and say something.
And there will be an ordinance there.
There will be, it, it will be, it, it won't, it'll be a chapter in the code book. There won't be any, it won't be called an ordinance anymore, it's going to be called a chapter.
It will correspond with an ordinance.
Right, it's the ordinance we currently have.
Township will get a copy of this.
Book, yes, they'll get several, I, I, I suspect you probably get at least 10 town.
How many did they say?
It's between 10 and 15, I don't remember from the original, probably a year ago.
They said they had one already made up, do we get one right now?
No, it's all electronic right now, Mr. Jackson, they're not going to print it until we approve it and adopt it.
Yeah. And they would like us to agree that there are no changes that need to be made in any of these ordinances?
Well, what do I have right now?
There's a very few changes for a book that's that thick.
Well, I would say, because a lot of things are in compliance with state standards, and a lot of the studies come from state standards too. The one that, the one that KPI, you should have a copy of your packet.
Yeah, the one on the.
The one that's a sewage.
Well, I would confess, it's my ordinances bother me, not their client, I just don't understand, I mean, I don't, I don't know what a 53 is, they referenced in that.
I don't know that I put that, I sent that as a separate email.
And it wasn't BS, I don't know what BS were.
Well, the reason I say is that, if you think now, okay, you have your zoning, which is probably about that, and your subdivision is probably about that.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm saying, and so you're right there, and then you're also going to have, they have a lot of other smaller ordinances, ordinances that are not as big as zoning and subdivision, but they're all going to add up, and it's going to be about that, well, you know, about that.
Their answer is to make any revisions to that number of ordinances before we finalize it?
Yes, that's, that's part of the process.
It could take 50 years.
Well, they, they're, that's why they asked us all these questions, and.
Well, my answer to my question is, put the thing out in its final form, and as we use the ordinances, we'll go through.
Well, what we're doing now, Bob, is analyzing, that's why I said I've been meeting with KPI, because some of the things they wanted to clarify had to do with engineering aspect of the ordinance, so I sat down on top of the engineering department. Also, Mr. Lisker has possibly, is this a criminal offense, or is this a, is this a civil matter? So we, we tasked Mr. Lisker to look at those particular parts and answer that, and the next phase is I'm going to meet with municipal authority lines with the zoning, saying, okay, these are the recommendations they were making, making for us to do, do you guys agree? They say, oh, you shouldn't change it. KPI looked over their part on the section, and they only came up with one area that they recommended that we change, which was sewage.
And I don't think, I don't think I included that in your packet tonight, it was an email I sent two days ago, but I'll make sure everyone gets it, I'll print it out.
And then it pretty much is about the holding tanks, you want to prevent holding tanks in your township, how close your wells should be to your septic system. So we had some of that, some part of that was already in our ordinance, but it wasn't clear on like the holding tanks and what, who can have holding tanks.
Is it clear now?
It is under the new recommendations from KPI, which I, it's, it's, she'll send you a copy of that.
Yeah, tomorrow, I'll send it out.
I understand, John, you only looked at some of the editorial legal analysis questions, right? You didn't get to the code.
I, I, I don't, I'm, Mr. Bar. I, I, I only, I'm, Mr. Barrow just passed me the assignment primarily of the criminal and civil. There were some other issues that I raised in the part of that review, um, and I, if, if that email goes to General Code, then they can, they can deal with it.
Well, we haven't, we haven't done the same review with the site questions, yeah, uh, uh, we, you did, you did the legal one.
Yeah, I, I.
Site questions, code review site questions, Jeannie Sanders.
Uh, I don't know, what, what's it saying beneath that?
It just says it from, I'm saying, I don't know what a site question is.
I, I would cite, I would think website.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're referring to right now.
I, I would think that that has to do with website questions.
Yes, if you're accessing it through the online, yeah, if you go online. The site questions are the online version, that you have a manual access tip, you should call Jeannie Sanders and, or email her, if you have trouble about, call me and I'll have her contact you, let me know what's the best time and I'll, I'll have her, if you get over here.
Well, as I say, it's not my, I'm not criticizing, what is it, I'm normally criticizing my understanding, but I don't wanna go, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a gruesome process, that's why we got the second one over here.
It's a good idea, we all want, I'm gonna say we're gonna do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I've gotta understand it, to be able to, uh, answer the question.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, um, okay, any other questions under the page?
No.
Oh, all right, Mr. Barrow, you're off. Uh, well, we're opening up back up to public comment, and your public comment, and you're running the thing.
Hello?
Miss Barrow, I don't think we have, it doesn't seem like it, but I just, we, we need to announce, and I don't think we have yet, but we have an executive session in eleven today.
Yes.
For, for the training.
Yeah.
For the supervisors, uh, for the borrow laws, and I don't think we announced that.
I would do that.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we've done, it's, we announced it.
It was eleven AM, it was for the borrow law law.
Training, training.
Training, but sunshine agreement.
Sunshine Act training.
As part of the settlement.
Setover the roof.
Sunshine Act training for settlement roof, okay.
Okay, well, another new business, uh, another new business, we have a budget schedule, I think Wendy put a proposal out there for a budget schedule. We need to start that process of our budget, um, so I hope everybody has an opportunity to look under the, the, uh, budget, uh, schedule.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions on the dates that we have scheduled?
Just like we did last year.
Yeah.
The only thing, uh, you'll note is missing that we do not have workshops on there, because we can't put our workshops, but I think, Mr. Barrow, you, you think about adding.
Yeah, I was saying, if they, if they talk to Wendy about maybe possibly moving up a couple of workshops, um, we can start, this month, or we can start in August and have a couple of budget workshops, we need to, uh, help somebody's workshop, we'll discuss, uh, what we wanna put in the budget, what's needed to be in the budget, like the road departments and different, uh, projects that we have going on, so, uh, does anybody have any idea what we wanna do, or is it a workshop?
I have my calendar, I already.
I think it's on there, I have the eighteenth of August, so we could do one in August just to get the process started and that's when we'll all review what staff has put forward and then the supervisors can, um, make their comments, the very first comments.
And that the eighteenth of August?
Uh, is that a Tuesday?
Tuesday night?
But you can choose any date in the middle of the month that it works.
Well, uh, that's what we choose, that's what we choose here, the eighteenth, you would guys?
That's actually when the planning commission is, if it's the evening, so if you wanna do an evening, we'll move that.
Don't remind me of the evening, because when we have our workshops, I would like the opportunity for the residents to be able to be a part of the budget workshop.
Uh, and what day, would it Wednesday, or what day works for the board?
I don't care, I'm saying I'll make whatever works.
Wednesday?
Nine, eight, so the nineteenth, will that work for you? All right, then I will, um, advertise that.
Seven o'clock?
Seven, seven PM, not seven thirty.
Yeah, it's gonna be called Budget Workshop?
Seven PM.
Seven PM, yeah, let's call it Budget Workshop.
I have some questions.
Eight, nineteen, like, eight, no.
Eight, nineteen, Wednesday, mm-hmm, seven PM.
So, uh, since I'm, uh, learning the ropes here as far as how government works, it's been a journey in itself. Uh, so do you hand us, uh, things like, give us year-to-date?
Yeah, I mean, you're getting all that in your packets every month.
I didn't know if you did that in a different format.
I will do it in a.
To work along, uh, parallel with the, uh, budget.
Yeah, uh, I'll put, I'm, uh, asking that, I think it's, what's my deadline now, which is today? Uh, they asked all the departments to give me, so please try this week or before the end of next week to give me your proposed budget for next year, and then I'll put all those numbers together.
Proposed what? I couldn't know.
Uh, it's so unclear that the department budgets are due to the treasurer today, so basically.
Guess what we need to do?
We're in the summer's deadline, but yes, I can put it together in a, um, an Excel spreadsheet with spaces on it so that you can look at year-to-date, you can look at last year's budget, and you can use those.
That's fine, I didn't know what you did, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, whatever format you.
That works for me, whatever it is.
Whatever format you.
I didn't know what to expect.
You tell me what works for you and that's all.
Yeah, something along those lines.
Can we have the column that we did last year?
Yeah, we'll do it totally like that.
The blank column, where I can write in the estimate of what we're doing.
Yeah, if you say before from last year work, I'll do the same exact thing for this year and we'll do that.
Worked very well, it's.
Okay, I'll do it.
I'll put those together for you and get those to you by the end of the week and we'll, we'll get that worked out.
So, good.
All right.
All right, any other thing about the workshop? Nope, okay, we'll move on to the deputy tax collector, um, you have selected a deputy tax collector, I was told?
Yes, Kami Knight, she's starting.
Kami Knight, um, does the board have to vote to approve that?
Jeez, I don't know, answer that question, might as well go ahead and approve just in case you do, I, I don't know.
Well, I know she has to have one, um, so I'll make a motion that we accept, uh, Jessica's recommendation that Kami Knight be her deputy tax collector. A second?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, seven, eight, okay, seven, eight. A, A C N B Resolution for updating accounts, Wendy has prepared a resolution to the bank, uh, has asked for us to, uh, sign, um.
Oh, that, right, add the signatures?
To add, to add the signatures to the account, um, everybody have any questions on that? For the third signature on the checks? All right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, sign the resolution and get it back to the bank to have a second.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, right, do you need us to sign this one right here, or?
I'll, I'll hand it to you, I'll be glad to do that one, okay, thank you.
Um, so that's, 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 insurance courts. All right, Bobby, uh, I think you were talking to Wendy about insurance courts and stuff like that?
Yeah, I know, uh, September's the magic day, September one, I'm remembering writers at the thirtieth, Wendy, is it? For, uh, the.
Oh, it's the first.
First of September.
Yeah. Oh, is this for covering that, can you just formally, uh, tell me if you're going to be responding to the request for a letter that you asked for, that the current insurance company asked for? Do you recall that letter?
I do, I do.
Will you be responding to that, so I can formally find an answer in?
No.
It's, as far as I understand, as long as we use pretty much a Pennsylvania insurance agent or whatever, we're, pretty much all of them are a member of that association. Am I right in saying that?
No, I mean, on your list, it tells you somewhere permanent and somewhere somewhere else, is, is there a, is there a, oh, no, insurance, you have that.
What are you saying? I don't understand, Justin.
Uh, remember I sent you, I printed that out for you, the insurance companies, and I said, oh, this, this person who's over here, oh, it didn't show up, but it's the whole area. Carrier, is it, you have a carrier?
Yeah.
This person is permanent.
Okay.
This is selective, this is, so they're not permanent.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's not all things.
So it's possible that we wouldn't go, yes, that is a possibility. That one would be for you.
Well, I think we need to get some quotes.
Yes.
On, on insurance, absolutely, it's, uh, my understanding, it's been a while, so.
Is that something that we advertise, or is that a telephone call? I don't follow them.
I don't think that has to be advertised.
No, I don't, no.
It does not have to be advertised, so we can actually solicit ourselves.
So this would be a good time, that you were here and everything, you'd stand back and be there. There you go.
That's all right, I, I, I can just sign, I have a, I also have a seal.
Yes.
Yeah, a seal. So, back to the insurance, do you want me to go ahead and contact some of those companies, does the board wanna tell me what companies to contact? Do one of you wanna go ahead and reach out, how do you wanna handle that?
I'd like to be involved with that, with your assistance.
All right, why don't you get with me and we'll talk about it?
Yes.
And then we can develop, um, I can put together, using the insurance that we have now, I can put together, uh, some kind of bid form for them to look at. If you review, I'll draft something, give it to you.
Well, we're gonna compare apples to apples, that's for sure.
Right, and I'll, I'll have you review that and then you can help me select companies to send that out to.
Yeah, all right.
All right, sure, sounds good.
Yeah. Very good. How you feel about that, guys?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
All right, so, we're done with the insurance button, landlord vendors registration, um, according to our. Okay, we have, and we have a ordinance in there requires, which has not been followed for quite some time, uh, that any of the landlords in our township need to be registered with the township, uh, and when they have a new tenant move in or out, uh, that they register that tenant, that way, a tax collector will know who's in the township and who needs to be paying, you know, their ITU, in a IET.
Per capita.
Per capita, stuff like that, right now, we do not have that, even though we have an ordinance, this, this thing to be due. Um, when I was talking with Mr., uh, Paul Ratliff, Donald, uh, he bought this landlord also, and he said that it was very easy to, uh, require your landlord wants to do that, to register it, and then once a year, uh, I mean, once every three years, uh, the township could direct their zoning, uh, zoning man to go out and do inspections of the property, uh, which was what the landlord would pay, pay for, so anyhow, uh, I thought he certainly is a proposed agreement to that effect.
Now, what kind of inspection are you talking about? Cause that's pretty broad to go.
It just go out to inspect the thing, it has windows in the house, it has running water, it has electric in the place, and it's not a slumlord hold.
Okay.
That's the inspection.
So they're gonna do a walk-around?
Just a walk-around, just walk around, that's like fifty bucks, or something like that. Um, Dominic did suggest that if we were gonna enforce the, uh, the renter, uh, reg- registration, that we also implement the inspection every three years, uh, because it keeps, uh, keeps the township abreast of what's going on as far as properties, rental properties, and that you don't get into a position where you have slumlords, rental properties in the place, and you don't, you don't have the, no, no, uh, record of what's going on. Uh, anyhow, we put that on the agenda for tonight's agenda to, for your knowledge, first and foremost, what do we wanna do with that? Because it is one of the questions in our qualification, if we wanna drop that ordinance out completely or if we wanna keep it in and make changes, and like I said, uh, KPI has recommended that we keep it and make changes. Uh, so, the board have any thought on that?
Well, we'll line up, but I don't, it's, we gotta keep track of who's, who's in and out of the township. And from none other than the EIT laws, they don't have any way to keep it up with people like that unless municipalities help them.
Right, 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 right.
Well, I, I agree with that all, all heartily, the, um, the inspection thing, though, I think is a different beast. Not that I'm totally against that, but what I'm saying is, who can and cannot do an inspection? Let's just take some, for example, uh, Roadmaster, Road Group, they're out there, they're covering every inch in this township, you know, every week, they would see things. Would they be able to do that inspection or fill out a simple form? Um, for the township, cause you're there to do it without, uh, additional charges to the residents.
Does the ordinance say anything about that?
I don't know.
They just said they have a main hand list.
They'll just have the main hand list.
They have a brand.
Yeah, our, our ordinance right now says, since we have a main hand list, we have to provide to the township, when we, when rest of news out, and then we send.
All for that?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm talking about that too, like I said, as far as the other part, it's just something to consider right now, because we do have it in September if we want to add that to the ordinance, uh, and as Dominic said, and he may be aware of it, Pennsylvania Municipal Authority, um, does do these inspections, they've been doing it all over, uh, places, so they do, and they do it at minimal charge, and the charge goes to the man owner, not to the resident. He may actually do this to the landlord, so if you're a landlord property, every three years, you're gonna pay, just like we do right now with, uh, cooking or a steck it.
Yeah.
Every three years, you're gonna get a knock on your door or, or a scheduled visit, uh, to do an inspection of your property and, uh, it'd be bill that to, to them handle, so that's just something to consider. He didn't, he didn't actually, uh, put anything together for me to present to the board tonight, it was, uh, well, it was just a, a, a topic of discussion, if you wanted to book it something like that or not, we would have to.
I have a question, though, so what if you have like a split level home and you rent to a family member and you're gonna have to pay the township to come and inspect your own home that you share with a family member, cause they rent from you fifty bucks?
Well, if, if you have it registered as a rental property, yes. Uh, let, let me ask you this, as well, is it a problem for the township, I mean, I trip around in a township, I mean, I, I don't know.
I don't think it's a rental property here.
We got, we got some, we do have some rental properties in the area, yeah, uh, I wouldn't say that's a problem, uh, other than to the tax side, you would be correct, to the tax side, uh, we have quite a few rental properties and I'm sure they're not paying their, paying their, uh, per capita tax, because nobody knows who they are, but Mr. Stikes, and I'm just giving Mr. Stikes an example, he does probably eight or ten rental properties on, on his price, uh, but he doesn't, like, one person moves out and another person moves in, he doesn't stand as a risk that this person moved out and another person moved in. So, out of those properties, we're not, the township's not making any per capita tax from those.
No, I, I agree with the registration, but I, I can just give one other good point about the inspections. The other thing I was gonna say is, um, municipal, municipal code alliance, under the Uniform Construction Code, if a property is basically unfit for, uh, habitation, they have the right to go in and declare it abandoned now. You know, even, and, and I know they've done it in some, some of my other townships where, for various reasons, um, they've declared properties unfit for habitation and they've placed lock on the door, locks on the doors and.
And that's, that makes a big blow.
So I mean, I, I, I mean, if, I guess if they, we already have the right to do that, why, I, I don't know if we need to.
Yeah, we don't have to, it's just something that, that Donald, because of the statement of qualification, if we wanted to add.
Yeah.
That to it, so, I'm not implementing that we share or shouldn't, uh, although, because the main question is, do we wanna keep the ordinance or we wanna drop the ordinance altogether, uh, cause it's a ordinance that has not been, uh, used and utilized in the township for many, many years.
My thought is keep ordinance, that's as simple as that.
All right, is that an issue?
Nope, that's, uh, I'll make that a motion.
All right.
I'll say good.
All in favor? All right, okay, that's the matter.
Right, that's done.
That's the other thing, thank you very much, that's all we had to do with that one, cool. All right, uh, we're gonna do this, the middle, we, uh.
I, I actually, do, do we really need to go to the executive session, I mean, we've discussed it previously, like you said, so if you're in agreement, my, my suggestion is to pass a motion, uh, agreeing to settle the case, uh, based on what we previously discussed and that the property would be taxed along the borderlines, starting in twenty twenty twenty, so starting in twenty twenty-one, um, and we would not sign the settlement agreement until the Fairfield Area School District has signed it. And so that, I guess, if, if we discuss that, if, if someone's made that motion.
I'll make that a motion that we, uh, uh, follow Mr. Lisco's advice that we took in the executive session, that we sign the agreement after, uh, the school district agrees to first to sign, and we would follow their suit. Uh, and we would start collecting taxes on the borderline starting in twenty twenty-one. You have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, good, we'll have to do that. Good, we want to do that.
Trying to save a little bit of time.
Awesome, so, listen, item number two, record resolution tax records. We have that in front of us, do we have to do this? Like I said, resolved, the supervisor will be telling the township as counted as whereas virtue of the resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eight adopted P seven twenty twenty, the township declares that intent to follow the schedule and procedures for depositary disposition of records is set forth in the municipal code, manual approved December sixteenth, two thousand eight, as of November, March twentieth, two thousand nineteen. And whereas, according to Act four twenty eight of nineteen sixty eight, each individual act and deposit, disposition shall be approved by the reservation of the government, the audience, and the municipality. Now therefore, be it resolved, the supervisor will be telling the township as considering the points of the above civil and municipal records vandal, hereby authorize the disposition of the following public records for the year twenty two thousand to twenty twelve. Bills and taxes certification, tax pay or real estate, change of address records, deviantic tax collection records, non-mail estate. And so, extractions, certod, issues to tax collectors, general specific tax ledgers and related records, tax bills, paid receipts, tax collectors' book report, taxing districts, tax collectors' returns, payment, and that to this day resolved on the seventh of the day of July twenty twenty.
Safe, we're going to show away on the record.
We're going to destroy the records that go live.
That was what I need for that part. We're going to destroy old records that we have and we're going to pass on to, oh, that's.
I didn't put that, it's actually the topic of discussion, it's not a big part of it.
So the second part of this is, is H, we are transferring Fairfield school district tax records to the Fairfield school district after we pass this resolution. So, I make a motion that we pass a resolution to get rid of our old records and to distribute, to distribute the Fairfield school district's old records to them, and we would retain everything that's seven years or earlier. Is that correct, Jessica?
Correct.
Wendy, you in agreement with that, seven years or?
Actually, they're all different, I don't know. They, they have different time periods, but Jessica and I went through and this is the minimum.
Right.
Is yes.
So, I make a motion that we pass this resolution?
I'll second it.
On the favor?
Aye.
Well, thank God, we'll get rid of some of these records. Alright, and we skip right on down to, what is that? Did I skip something?
Um.
No, I don't believe so.
We did the record resolutions, and we did the, you talked about the tax records.
Okay, uh, did everybody? I was going to say I got a one here, but we forget to put the well ordinance on there.
I don't have to well in with the qualification, we're just talking about with the qualification. Because it's going to be adopted, because that's what we're asking for, a well ordinance.
So, we do have a well ordinance here, that is going to be part of the qualification, which I showed today, I'll go back to that. This is from KPI, the recognition of KPI, that the well ordinance would be a straightforward well ordinance. And in the well ordinance, if you had a chance to see that, it just gives you, and I'm just going to bear with it, the, the, the design of the well, storm drains have to be twenty five feet minimum, drain during domestic sewage has to be a minimum of fifty feet, septic tanks and holding tanks have to be a minimum of fifty feet, surface of sewage disposal fields, a hundred, septic's peels, incest pools, a hundred, PBs, wherever that is, fifty feet, fuel tanks a hundred feet, any water pathway or drainage has to be a hundred feet. Additional restrictions in the minimum distance is the driveway has to be a minimum of ten, ten feet away from any well, personal structure drives, twenty feet, and property lines, ten feet. Like I said, this is, this is standard well ordinance. It also says at the end here, that we require that the residents have the water tested and the test results would be sent to the township and the person that drilled the well has to be certified in good standards to drill the well.
What do we want to do with these water samples?
Water samples, it's not a problem, it's mainly that we.
You're saying, you said that we send samples to the township?
No, 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 we report. The samples, we require that the well be drilled, what's the well drilled, the well driller takes a sample of the well water.
Got you, got you, I'm with you.
The well water is, sample is tested, the results are given to the owner and it probably sent to the township. So we have nothing to do with if they want to drink that water or not, that's totally up to them, and they won't be notified or as good a matter.
Wendy, do you have a file on septic systems on these properties where they bunch of well?
We don't keep making a, we don't have a well ordinance, so we don't even know when people are digging wells.
So, if you have a file currently that, that, these, this paperwork saying this water is okay to drink?
No.
No, we don't have anything. We'll go in their property file. Yeah, we have no information on.
We don't have anything about wells, that's why we don't deal with that.
Well, that's what, where we want to put them and what was going to be convenient.
Oh, I mean, it will go in the property file, I would assume. Also, there's, I can talk to someone else who has a well ordinance, if they have a better system of how those words work.
Yeah, right.
See what they can tag to, makes sense.
Yeah, but if you do, just put everything in the property file, that's where they do have to put the property, but it probably makes sense for a spreadsheet on something to list.
It's just one sheet, what it is, is the sheet that he, that he said he would present to the township is when they come in to get a permit to drill a well, they come in, they have a sheet, you have to give them, on that sheet, you have a list of the well, just like they do with something. These people can drill wells, and then that person will fill out how deep the well was, when the well was tested, what the well results was, and start it, they send it back to the township. That's it.
What about the drawing of the water, would that be?
No, that's all, that's all now. We don't have anything. The only other thing that we did put out there is construction, that he did recommend that we put this in, because a lot of times people want to come to the township and say, hey, I want to put a, I want to be a, put in one of those geocircle closed loop systems or open loop systems, because they want to do that. And we have something in the ordinance that addresses that.
Sorry, that's the last page of the, the bank position.
Well, who's going to police this good order, bad order?
Nobody, that's not us. That's not us, that's, we're only required to have the water tested. What they do with it after that, that's totally with them, it's all with them.
Well, if we don't, if they have a voting, how it looks, why should we buy it and collect it?
I'll put you put it in your file, that's what he just said, and that's what Dominic said to me.
We're not going to act on it or even pay judgment on it.
No, it's up to them. It's up to them.
Okay, I understand, I'm not.
Right, you just put it in this file, when you, when you have the well drilled, you would, the township required to get, if you had a permit to drill a well, you used a proper professional person who was certified to drill well, and your well is tested, so you're beginning to acknowledge that the well is good bad. And we put that into the file, then she was drinking, that's all good.
What do you think of that, John? Is that what you're hearing in other townships or what's in place? Or can you shed a light on that?
Some of my other townships have well drilled ordinances, they primarily deal with casing and routing and all that.
Yeah, that's all in there.
That's all, yeah.
This is the first one that I'm aware of that requires the homeowner to test the water. Generally, there's just nothing said about it.
Right.
And it's, you know, I mean, you got, I mean, I have a well and, you know, I got a water softener, I got the UV light. I mean, most of my other townships have nothing in there about testing. I, I don't see a problem with requiring to be tested. I test mine every, I have mine sent off every six months and every other month or so I'll, I got the cheap thing at Lowe's, I'll test it on my own. You know, I mean, you're going to be drinking the water, you, you've got to be, you know, if you've got a well, you better, you better have it tested or else, you know. I, I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's kind of like putting, putting water in your car, run it instead of gas. You know, it's just, you, you, you've got to make sure, everyone I think who has a well knows that it needs to be tested.
Yeah.
You, you can, I don't, I don't see a problem with putting that in there and, but I, I, I like the fact that we're not responsible for policing it because that's really up to the homeowner. I mean, I, I have some Mennonites find that, that they don't have UV lights, they don't, they don't mind nitration in their water. You know?
I don't know.
You know, they, they, but that's their choice, you know? They want to drink water with a little bit of nitrogen.
And they'll, and they'll well.
Yeah, if they want to drink water with nitrates in it, I mean, that's, that's their choice.
Alright, well, I just wanted to give a flavor.
Yeah, well, I've, I've never seen any, anyone.
Yeah, I like the testing.
Yeah.
We just had a water tested for nitrates.
But.
And that's not.
No.
Well, I'll tell you, what you can do is here, he did not put the testing in.
Oh, okay, well.
The testing's not in here.
Oh, we have well ordinance, so we.
Yeah, I just read this one, he did not, for some reason, he did not.
Most of them is not in. Most of them is not in. I thought I got two different.
You might have got two different, but that's not what I. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, yes it is, I'm sorry. It's number seven, we have number eight, pressure tests is required with water, that's a hundred PSI and turdism, tropical, beachy type evidence. And evidence of testing from the installer, that's being.
Pretty dry.
Everything's got.
That's just pressure testing.
That's just pressure testing.
That's not, that's not, that's different than water testing.
Yes, and that's, and that's, and that's.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you don't have to touch water, it'll be a silver.
I just need to know your test with the model.
So, alright, so, does, do we want to take action on this tonight?
That was, the only action you would take was, do we want to include a well ordinance in part of the qualification? Because.
If we do, we have to well ordinance.
I, I would tell them, put in, well, if you, if you want that well ordinance, then just vote that, to send it to the general code to include it.
When, I, I think we should have a well ordinance.
Yes.
I would go make one other suggestion. You only got one well driller in this town, that's my question, my knowledge.
No, we got a couple. Well, but not in this town, in this town, in this town, in our county, we have quite a weird.
In our county, yeah, well, I was, I was guessing. You might want to show the guy a copy of the well ordinance that we're passing, so he has something to revelation. We haven't thought about it since, none of us is really a well expert.
Well, that's not about it, so you, Al Sanders?
Yeah. Yeah, we can get Randy, I'm telling you.
Randy, why do you think, yeah, this is fine, I forgot this.
So, tell you what, let's, let us, we're going to present this to Randy Al Sanders.
We don't wait that till September anyway, when we respond.
Absolutely, so we'll pay you less until our next meeting.
Okay, great.
I mean, he's a pretty knowledgeable guy.
Yeah, yeah, he put mine in many, many years ago.
And he came to me afterwards and said, here, here's your test.
Cool, alright, so that's great, I'll make sure it gets coming in. Alright, and the last thing I have, a little more detail here, this is, this right here is just for budget serving purposes, is really, is Wendy and I have talked, so we have, Jessica and I have talked, and the chief has talked, and of course Wendy has a window air conditioner, there's one here, there's one in her office, too. They're not that greatly efficient. So, I talked with the idea of possibly putting in our twenty twenty one budget to central air conditioning and heat in there and go within the base board, not the key, to be a heat source that will also provide bottles, air conditioning, heat. So, what my thought was that maybe we can start getting some pricing from different contractors and see if it's something that we want to budget twenty twenty one to have a heat pump, air conditioning system, system put into our ability. We already have the propane here, we have the tank here, so everybody go with propane heat. All we have to do is really add a heat pump with an air conditioning unit up in the.
Yeah, they do a conjunction with force air and, and, yeah.
Right, so, I think it'd be more efficient for the township as far as financing, as far as heating and cooling the building. So anyhow, it's nothing that, I'm not commercializing, I'm not going to say it is, I want to get some air conditioning, I get some pricing for contractors to possibly do that. Do you guys have anything to throw in that?
Well, tonight I might have been on the fence, but as of tonight, I don't know. I think it would be, every time we have a meeting, we got to shut it off.
Right, right, if we have a central air system, we don't have to do that, if the central air is outside, not inside, so. All, all of that.
There's, there's good systems out there, they're very advanced today. I'd be like, but operating them is a big sport. They'll be a pain back in the number of years, whether the number is, I don't know, but they'll be a pain.
Alright, so, I'll, I'll reach out to some of the air conditioning, the heating, the people in the area and see if we can get some bids in here and see if that's something we want to place on our budget for twenty twenty one. Anything else that I have missed tonight that we need to cover?
You missed the journey.
That's the only part. Do I have a basis for our journey?
So moved.
Alright, on favor?
Aye. No more meetings, sir.
No, no, I don't have any, I don't need Tuesday.
Thank you guys, we're going to leave now. Thank you, and then, Jessica got word to ask your question, did you punch in?
I did not.
Just write it down.
That's her time card, so you can see what's here, thank you.
Yeah, just put it on your time sheet, and hand write it on your time card.
Oh, Wendy, I think she did need that because it was in the file.
Oh, no, no, these are just copies.
Well, I need a signature.
Uh, you're right.
You're welcome. Oh, thank you, you're welcome.
This is your sign?
Could you get all the policies and limits on stuff together so we can take a look at that?
Yeah, I have a sheet that we have.
These are the walls and all the.
Yeah, I have some more sheet, and I have all of them. They're all in the big thick folders for them today, with all the entries.
Why'd you say that?
What I mean, put on the month.
O B T out.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking last time driving home, I said, well, that meeting was long, but then I was thinking, well, we used to have two meetings. So, so really, and, and the two would usually go about two hours each. So, now you're covering in one meeting, what you used to cover in two. So, it's really, you know, this meeting probably all an half hour longer than what it normally would be. But then you're limiting your.
Yeah, that's why you gave it to. You mean lockers. I remember, well, your question was.
What do you want to do?
I don't know. Yes, they sign the body, attorney company.
See, and they're best of body company.
Thank you.
Yes, I know, sir. Give me if you need, to get a hold of general code.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, tell me about it.
I'll go with Sam, they can come here, I'll read it, they show me. That would be good, on that.
Oh, no, see him, if you got a.
On a video. Because you said, I love it. Okay, let's see, I'll, I'll take it and see what they want, and then I'll give you back the property.
I mean, I can call them and, and, you know.
That's all fine, it's all good, thank you.
Alright.
Whatever, I didn't know.
Yeah, why don't you follow that one? You could do it in either one of your jerseys.
Yes. The hot, you know, dog.
Uh, yeah. Ready?
In hand.
Yeah.
Blessings in hand. Good night, ladies, have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, all right, thank you, love you.
Okay, I'll fix it.
Okay, we have a. I hear you punch in.
Okay, alright.
I didn't tell you that.
Alright, that's fine. Wendy, do you want to switch?
I'm right here.
Actual recording, we're still recording.